Okay, everyone. Hello. I would like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the Flagstaff City Council Work Session. Today is Tuesday, May 12, 2020. In calling the meeting to order, I would like to provide notice that the Flagstaff City Council has the ability to reach us into executive session for legal advice, should we so choose to do so. Mr. Solomon, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I would be happy to, Mayor. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Um, Mr. Clifton? Can you please read our mission statement?
Yes, I can, and it's not in front of me, but I believe it's to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
It is such as that. Thank you, Mr. Clifton. Appreciate that. City Clerk, can we please have roll call?
Please, Mayor Evans.
Present.
Vice Mayor Shimonie.
Present.
Councilmember Aslan. Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Odegaard.
Present.
Councilmember Salas.
Present.
Councilmember Whelan.
Present.
Councilmember Aslan is present.
With that, we're now down to item number four. Item number four is public participation for items that are not currently on our agenda. While council can listen and receive feedback, because the items have not been agendized, council cannot respond to anything that we might hear per law. Ms. Rama, at this time, is there any public participation for items that are not currently on our agenda?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. There is one item, and that is an email titled "Spruce Trees on Beale." It reads, "I support the needed improvements at the intersection of 180 and Beale. It is dangerous because of the traffic, the dog leg with forest in the line of sight. Removal of the spruce trees is unfortunate but necessary for definite safety reasons. The positive thing is that fast-growing spruce trees of that size are maybe 70 years old compared to a similar-sized ponderosa that would be several hundred years old." Thanks. Nat White.
Okay. If that is our only public participation for items that are not on our agenda, we'll go ahead and move down to item number five. Item number five is a review of the draft agenda for the May 19, 2020 council meeting. Council? Mr. Odegaard.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just two things. I wanted to thank Stacy for sending us the applicants for the B-PAC. I received that email this morning with my request that I sent out last night. And then also concerning the IGA with the county, the request is, which I assume is just going to be basic knowledge of the request, is that within the IGA that all entities must follow the Arizona State Elections Manual, whether it's the county or the city. But I assume that will be already in there, but just as a reiteration. So, thank you.
Ms. Whelan.
Thank you, Mayor. Routine item 6B. We're talking about lease amendments. My question is, we're looking at abating rents for six months for American Airlines, United, Enterprise Alamo, Hertz, and Avon. So my question is, those are all national companies. And I'd like information on whether they individually have received money from CARES for just this purpose. So I'd like to know before we abate rents how much money they have received as an organization through this act.
Mayor, this is Heidi Hansen. We'll get that information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Mayor, in addition to that, this item seems to be that it would be approved by city manager to extend it. So are we saying that it's really an administrative request? Or is it a council request? And if it's a council request, why wouldn't it come to us to be extended?
Hi, this is Stacy Breckland-Aggs. How are you, Mayor and Council? I think I can answer that. And thanks for the questions. We'll get back to you on the CARES funding that they've received to date. I think the intent was that this amendment was initially for six months and that we could potentially do three initial more months, up to 12, up to a total of 12 months. And so we wouldn't come back to council for those following two quarters, unless you prefer that we come back to you for any additional months.
Stacy, thank you for that information. I would prefer that it, should this go forth, come back to council because the next quarters are going to change and change quickly. So I think that should be a council decision.
Sure. I'm happy to work with the team and work to look at that staff summary and make any necessary amendments.
Thank you.
Council, is there anything else for this item? Okay, not seeing any. We'll go ahead and move down our agenda. We are now down to item number six. This is an update on the Downtown Connection Center and the Bus Rapid Transit Projects, Mountain Line Transit, NAPDA.
Good afternoon, Mayor. This is the Community Development Director, Dan Fulk. I'm pleased this afternoon to be joined by Kate Morley, Deputy General Manager of Mountain Line, who's going to talk about the Downtown Connection Center project and also Busy Collins, who's a transit planner with Mountain Line. And she's going to talk about the Bus Rapid Transit Project. And I am going to share my screen. So give me a second here. And then I will advance through this presentation. And we'll take questions on the DCC when Kate finishes her presentation. Then we'll go into the BRT, but they're combined as one item here. So with that, let me turn it over to Kate. Hopefully, she's on the line with us.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Mayor and members of council. Kate Morley, Deputy General Manager. I'm excited to present to you today on the DCC project, one of our two major capital projects that Mountain Line is pursuing at this point in time. Go ahead, Dan, and advance this slide. We were last in front of you a year ago, I believe it was actually May also, when we presented a variety of alternatives that we had explored for different sites for a new Downtown Connection Center. And since it has been a year, I want to go ahead and do a little bit of review for you about how we got to where we are in this project. So, next slide. So, as you know, the Downtown Connection Center, or DCC as we call it for short, is located on Phoenix Avenue on city-owned properties. We have the two curb islands where the buses pull up. And then we also use some space inside the Phoenix Avenue warehouse that the city owns for operator comfort station that has restrooms and a fridge and small kitchen for our operators to use when they're down there. We started this site in 2008. We had a million annual riders and last year had more than 2.5 million. When we started on this site, we had six routes and now have 10. We also had 30-foot buses and now operate 40- and 60-foot buses. And so the punchline of all this is that we're really out of space at the current DCC and need more room for both our buses. And we'd like to have options for patrons to access customer service facilities down there as well. Currently, you can't bypasses or retrieve your lost and found items. You have to come to our CASBAR headquarters for all of that. So we're really looking forward to the opportunity to make this a better connection center and for us not to dictate any service planning that we're doing around how many buses we can park at the Downtown Connection Center, but around what's best for this community. Next slide. Thanks, Dan. So, programming for the new DCC at a very high level, we're looking for 15 bus bays. As I mentioned, we're trying to squeeze 10 buses into what was originally designed for six right now. We're looking for that operator comforts, restrooms, break rooms that are a little nicer than the current facilities. They have more opportunities to access restrooms so they're not all trying to get in there at the same time as all the buses are pulsing in and out. We'd really like those patron amenities for customer service, potentially public restrooms, some security offices, et cetera. We'd like to have some parking options in addition to public parking. So we want to be able to have some staff park there. A kiss-and-ride. This is where people can drop somebody off for the day so that they can ride the bus while they take their car. So you reduce a car trip essentially. Maybe you put your kid on or your spouse on the bus halfway through your ride. And then also rideshare waiting areas. For example, Ubers and Lifts that are currently circulating around the downtown area are just adding to congestion and, you know, using green or emitting greenhouse gases. We'd like to have a spot where they could pull over, shut off their engines while they wait for another ride and not just be circling our downtown area. And then additionally, we'd like to have some really great bike facilities, bike lockers, maintenance, that sort of thing, to really connect that first last mile. As this project has progressed, we have received additional funding over what we had initially. And so now we're looking also to move some of our admin in addition to customer service downtown. You know, we work with city staff quite a bit, county staff quite a bit. And so it would be nice for us to be down there and facilitate those connections with hopefully face-to-face meetings in the near future. We also have things that we would like to do that are more partnership and do depend on those connections to be made. We would love to really be a regional hub. You see, our name is the Downtown Connection Center and not the Downtown Transit Center. We think that's for a reason. We'd love to have Greyhound, the Flix Bus, Groom Shuttle, and even the Amtrak potentially connect at this one facility. We'd love to look at partnerships for revenue generation in terms of could we have some sort of community space that is useful by many, some small commercial and retail, like a coffee shop, et cetera. And then also looking at partner services. Is there anything our member agencies want on this site? Parks and open space? You know, additional offices for their uses, et cetera, where we can be a community partner in building the facility for everybody's needs? Next slide. So, last summer, we undertook an alternatives analysis. And we originally looked at any property that was large enough for us to operate on within a quarter-mile of the Downtown Activities Center. We take quite a bit of space, it turns out, with a lot of buses needing at least three-quarters of a full city block. So it's really limiting for our future growth in terms of how many properties we could look at. But we did look at five or six properties. We narrowed it down to the top three that made sense in terms of maneuvering and size and space. And then we did a very detailed analysis looking at a whole variety of criteria under the categories that you see in front of you and ranked our sites. And staying on the Phoenix Avenue site where we currently are, but expanding to occupy a larger portion of the site is the number-one ranking alternative out of that alternatives analysis. Next slide. So what I have in front of you is what we call the concept of feasibility. So there are big constraints on this site in terms of infrastructure. And we wanted to make sure that if we couldn't overcome any challenges or developing in close coordination with some of these challenges, that the site would still work for us. And the short answer, that is yes, it does still work. So I'm not proposing that the final DCC will necessarily look anything like what you see in front of you on your screen. But it's meant to show that the site works for us even despite these constraints. And the major constraints are a sliver of property that separates two city-owned properties that is owned by BNSF. And so obviously, gaining access to railroad property can be a challenge. And so it is possible for us to just design around that sliver. We currently operate on both sides of that sliver. We have a path that connects the bus loading station to the Phoenix Avenue warehouse. So we can continue to do that. And also, this is obviously a large portion of the Rio de Flag. And it's really critical to everything we do that we're compatible with the Rio de Flag. And so we're very conscientious of that. So we do believe even with those large constraints, this is still a good site for us. Next slide. There are some other challenges that need to be dealt with as well. So one is that for this site to work, we do need to demo the Phoenix Avenue warehouse owned by the City of Flagstaff. It is really the timeline that drives the demo of the warehouses as being out of the way of the construction of the Rio de Flag. The Rio de Flag runs right through where our current Connection Center is. And so we're very cognizant of wanting to make sure we are well ahead of that project with a temporary staging area where this is and then ultimately the final design of the Downtown Connections Center. We do, to do that, we do need to relocate our own Mountain Line Operator Comfort Station. And there is a community group or community groups in there that rent or lease space from the City of Flagstaff. And so we do need to work with those groups to try to assist them in finding new locations, to whatever extent that's possible, and give them plenty of notice on terminating a lease, their lease with the city. Next slide. So moving forward as to what exactly our Downtown Connection Center might look like, that's still a really big question for us. We are in the very early stages of concept design. And we're still juggling a lot of questions about what exactly is facilitated there. So what you have in front of you are single-use transit facilities, examples of those where it's really just offices for a transit center, the customer service facilities, and operating the buses out of them. Next slide. But transit systems across the US are also doing much bigger projects where they are doing a lot of these offices with transit, et cetera. And so there are some examples in front of you, including one of the Valley Metro facilities down in Phoenix that has a large office complex associated with the Connection Center. I don't imagine that we'll have as many bus spaces as you see out there or a facility that size, but it gives you an idea of what's possible. Next slide. So our project delivery. So we're working on concept design this year. That includes environmental clearance, public engagement, and doing a variety of designs for feedback. The public engagement portion, we really see two phases. One, we'd like to do something very early on here in the next couple of months where we put something out on the Flagstaff Community Forum and solicit broad ideas about what people would like to see on the site and what they might like out of a design. We can't commit to anything at this stage, but we would like to hear from the community. And then later on, once we actually had some concepts, looking to go back out and get additional feedback from the public there. Once we finish the concept design and get approvals on that, then we would move into final design and then construction in 2022. The idea would be that the Rio de Flag is looking like it may construct in the spring of 2022. And then Mountain Line would be able to come in after that and construct right away. That would be the goal for the way those projects lined up. Budget-wise, we have secured two federal transit administration grants. One through a competitive award through ADOT that is still FTA money for 6.7 million. And then just this past year, we wrote a competitive grant to FTA and received another $15.6 million for the project. So we're feeling really good about our potential to design a real community asset here and our long-term dream of a Downtown Connection Center. We're also looking to get creative, of course, as we always are for any other joint agency or private-public-private partnership strategies that makes sense for the Connection Center that we want to build. Next slide. So our next steps on the project are to do our NEPA clearance, get FTA concurrence, and then we'd be looking to potentially have an IGA with the city for the use of that property. Concurrently, with final site selection, we'd be doing concept design. We do need to be doing some concept to get that NEPA clearance. And so these are kind of concurrent steps for how we move forward. The two big pieces that would happen immediately for concept are the public involvement and then really refining the partnership opportunities that we want to explore. Next slide. And so with that, I just want to open it up to any comments or questions from council. We are looking for a little bit of direction today regarding whether council would like city staff to bring back a resolution for council to consider that formally allows Mountain Line access to the site to conduct NEPA and concept planning. If that were to happen, we would be looking for it to happen before the summer recess. Would be ideal to really make sure Mountain Line knows it has that authorization to move forward by accessing the site for those activities to occur. And that's the end of my presentation before I turn it over to the BRT for Busy Collins. So I will pause here for questions.
So at this time, there's no public comment? I'm not really sure why there's no comment. We have Ms. Throdeba?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess if you're looking for maybe like an IGA between the City of Flagstaff and NAPDA to start doing some groundwork, is that what you're looking for? And if that's what you're looking for, I'm all in favor of that. I'm pretty excited about this project and looking forward to seeing that shovel in 2022. So thank you for the clarification.
Ms. Whelan.
Thank you so much for the presentation, Kate. I really appreciate that. I would like to take a minute and thank the city and NAPDA for the ongoing partnership to make this Downtown Connection Center happen. I believe before the IGA needs to happen, there are several things. But my concern is that BNSF sliver. And I guess my question might go to Dan or perhaps Kate. Will the city take action to assemble all of those parcels to make sure that that sliver does not get forgotten and that NAPDA can start the work as soon as the NAPDA is done and the other things are done?
Hi, yeah, this is Dan. The city has initiated contact with BNSF. We essentially put out an offer to acquire that sliver from BNSF. My recollection is initially they gave kind of a standard response. They weren't interested. But then I think, once we pushed it a little bit, they are reconsidering. So our intent is to acquire that sliver, and that process is ongoing.
Thank you, Dan. I think that's just such an important piece. And I'm excited to hear more about that as things go on. So thank you for taking that action.
Ms. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it would be a good idea that staff prepare a resolution for the city council saying that we will cooperate in every way with NAPDA and Mountain Line. And I'm certainly supportive of that. And like Mr. Odegaard said, I'm very excited about this project. And, you know, to reiterate what just got said, we need to kind of work with our friends at BNSF and purchase that sliver from them. I don't see that they're going to have much use for it. So, and we had meetings down there a few months ago. And the tone of the meeting were a feeling of cooperation. And I think we should use that and move forward. But anyway, yes, a resolution, just to clarify it, but it's just a formality. We're absolutely supportive of cooperation, full cooperation between the city and Mountain Line. Thank you.
Ms. Salas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I am in support of a resolution galvanizing that cooperation between the city and NAPDA, but also particularly allowing NAPDA, Mountain Line the ability to conduct its due diligence to meet the federal requirements to move forward with this project and eventually, you know, evolve into an IGA. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. I also am in favor of the resolution for sure. Is this coming back for council for comments at a later date? Or do you want us to give our comments on it now?
I think...
Mayor, this is Shane. All we're seeking today is direction to work with Mountain Line staff to prepare a resolution for your consideration that we expect to come before council before your summer break. So at that time, you would be able to weigh in and share your comments for sure in regards to that resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor's asking. Vice Mayor, were you asking more about when we could weigh in onto the design, what we think it should look like, things like that? Yes. So right now, we are looking at the IGA that would allow them to go forth and do their due diligence to make sure this is a site that would be appropriate. There will be a lot of community conversation and discussion regarding what is actually happening there.
Thank you.
So Mayor, this is Shane. Just to be clear, we are talking about bringing a resolution that would allow them access to the property so that they can do their due diligence and meet the FTA requirements. All of that is in preparation for a forthcoming IGA where a lot of these details will be hammered out. We don't expect that will occur until after your summer break.
Okay. Mr. Aslan?
Thank you, Mayor. So just for the record, city staff definitely has my direction in terms of moving forward with an IGA. I agree with everything Councilmember McCarthy said in particular. There's no need for a motion at this time, is there?
No, we're just giving direction.
Yep. Thank you.
Ms. Whelan?
Question. Would that resolution also state that the city will move forward with conversations with BNSF?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Whelan, this is Shane Dilly. And I think that we could definitely have a whereas incorporated in that resolution that would cover that desire. But it's definitely on the forefront of our minds, often in our conversations as a project team. So I don't think there's any concern with that.
Thank you, Shane. I really appreciate that. I know you have been spearheading and a great supporter of this project. So I'd like to thank you for that, too.
I have a follow-up question, very specifically about the BNSF sliver. This has to go with the NAPDA. This has to do with the NAPDA presentation. Am I correct in saying that while we would like Am I correct in saying that while we would like to have the BNSF sliver included, the project can move forward without that? Is that correct?
Mayor Kate Morley, again, yes, the project can move forward without that.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that we as council and everybody who's listening is aware of that. Definitely, we have had some great conversations with BNSF as of late and our partnership seems to be evolving in a very positive way. However, I do know that some things take longer than others. And depending on what is happening in the dynamics of just the world at the time, I want to make sure that we know that this project can move forward regardless of whether or not we get that sliver. If we get the sliver, I think it would be great, make the project holistic. If we don't, we can still move forward without it. So I just want to make sure we are aware of that. So it looks like you have council direction on this particular item. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next one. Thank you. Okay, we will go down to item number seven now. This is the City of Flagstaff Business Retention and Expansion Incentive. I believe this is Ms. Hanson?
All right. There we go. You should be able to hear me. This is Busy Collins, Transit Planner for Mountain Line.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor. We had one more item before we went to the EVA. Sorry. I was just moving right along. I'm sorry.
Let me catch up here. Sorry, Busy. Go ahead, Busy. We're on the slide now.
Thank you so much. So today I'll talk about what Bus Rapid Transit or BRT is and give an overview of our BRT project. But if there's only one point that you take away from my presentation today, it should be that this is much more than just a transit project. The BRT has a unique funding source that can help Flagstaff achieve multimodal improvements and great streets character along a popular congested corridor. Next slide, please, Dan. So the BRT is in a planning phase to study long-term improvements and high-capacity bus service from the Flagstaff Medical Center to Woodlands Village. And to the untrained eye, BRT simply looks like large buses providing frequent service arriving about every 10 minutes. Next slide, please. And to understand why BRT matters, it's helpful to understand how buses spend their time. And so really, only half of the time a bus is in motion while on the road. And just like any other vehicle on the road, buses wait in traffic and for signals to change, which is about a quarter of the time that the bus spends. However, buses are also waiting at bus stops, loading passengers by foot or deploying the mobility ramp and waiting as passengers pay fare. And so overall, if we can decrease time spent on traffic and passenger delays, the bus will be in motion more often. And this has a positive effect to attract bus riders by ensuring reliability and adherence to the schedule. And the bus travel time becomes much more comparable to car travel time as well. Next slide, please. And so BRT is really a toolbox of transit enhancements that address the common causes of bus delay. And this is the whole toolbox that we're seeing here on the screen. But just a couple examples, traffic delay can be addressed with dedicated bus lanes where the bus can continue to move if cars are lined up and it might be peak travel time. Also, transit signal priority is a great tool for buses to help maybe lengthen the green light or let the bus go a little early when we have a full-packed bus and continue its movement so we can stay on time and stay in motion. Passenger delay can be addressed with level boarding. So where the bus door is, it would be level with the curb and that reduces the need to deploy the mobility ramp. It also speeds up the boarding process for our passengers, all passengers. And also offboard fare collection. Having people pay their fare before they get on the bus really speeds up that boarding process. So overall, we're looking at tools that are applied where appropriate with the goal of making bus travel more competitive with car travel. Next slide, please. And we have a BRT route in Flagstaff. Mountain Link Route 10 began in 2011, and in the first year alone, system-wide ridership increased 66% and in subsequent years spurred economic development along the Mountain Link corridor. Next slide. And as we saw with Mountain Link, BRT has far-reaching benefits beyond the bus system and riders. This is captured in the project goals listed here. And as previously mentioned, this is a transit project, but it really has far-reaching effects, helping the community realize its goals of sustainability, bike and pedestrian mobility, and economic development. And I will also mention that this unique funding source can fund bicycle and pedestrian facilities that feed into the BRT. So not just along the corridor, but three miles for bike improvements outside of the corridor that feed in and a half mile for pedestrian improvements. You can just see that this footprint becomes really great in our community for positive impact. Next slide. As the BRT will be operating on public roads, this project has been guided by technical experts listed here. And for the past year, the stakeholders have been examining which BRT alternatives or combinations of BRT tools best achieve the project goals and make the most sense on the BRT corridor. And the stakeholders began this process with six alternatives on the northern section. So basically, downtown connection center north to Forest Avenue and the Flagstaff Medical Center and six alternatives on the southern section, basically downtown connection center down to about University Avenue. And I'll I'll touch on what that southern loop does. But those are the alternatives, the sections for the alternatives. And together, the stakeholders define criteria to screen all of these alternatives so we can narrow it down to one locally preferred alternative for each section, the north and the south. And the criteria that we came up with are comprehensive enough to balance transit benefits with community benefits. So for example, we had an alternative, a bus-bike lane on Humphrey Street on the northern section. And it was great for transit travel times, but it had significant right-of-way impacts on historic built resources, giving that alternative a low overall score. And at the October stakeholder workshop, we presented the evaluation results of the BRT alternatives. Next slide. The highest ranking alternative for the northern section is to be in general traffic lanes on Beaver and San Francisco Streets. Oh, next slide, Dan, please. Thank you. Please note that we are proposing to generally maintain the road design as it currently is today. So existing parking, sharrows, and bike lanes would remain. In places where the BRT project can improve sidewalk width and connectivity without impacting vehicle lanes and historic buildings, we will make improvements. Next slide. The highest scoring alternative in the Milton Road section has the BRT in center-running bus-only lanes. There we go. And the center-running alternative is top on that list. So you can see a cross-section. And while center-running bus-only lanes best achieves our project goals such as ridership and accommodating bikes and pedestrians, it means big changes on Milton. Oh, sorry, we went one too far. The alternative, perfect. The alternative ranked second has the BRT in side-running bus-bike right-turn lane with two lanes of general traffic. However, there's four other possible outcomes for the Milton Road section. A no-build, we can do nothing. A no-build with spot improvements such as acceleration lane, transit signal priority, kind of just really spot improvements, but not vastly changing the corridor. Three lanes with the bus operating in general traffic, which is that third line down there. And four total lanes with the bus operating in a side-running bus-bike right-turn lane. Next slide, please. And as I touched on earlier, that southern loop, so from University Avenue down to Woodlands Village, is being completed as part of the Milltown Project. And so some details of it are yet to be determined. What we do know is that the BRT will be running in bus-only lanes, side-running bus-only lanes on Beulah Boulevard. There we go. On Beulah Boulevard from University Avenue to Forest Meadows and turning around in Woodlands Village. Next slide, please. Staff believe we need public buy-in to these changes before making a final determination. And therefore, I'm presenting this information to commissions and business organizations for feedback. And this is the full list of people that I've been presenting to. I'm about 75% of the way through. And definitely with current events, it has thrown a wrench in this plan, but we're still working through it. So appreciate your time today as part of this list. Next slide, please. And some of you might be aware of the A.D.A. Corridor Master Plan projects on Milton Road and Highway 180 and wonder how they work together. The CMP and BRT are unique projects with different boundaries, as shown here. So the CMP is the red line. It definitely extends further north, further south than the BRT. And they overlap in the purple section, which is about a mile and a half on Milton Road. And so we have, we currently have shared decision-making with our project stakeholders as they also overlap and are currently finalizing the evaluation criteria. The outcome of these two projects will be one recommended alternative for the overlapping portion on Milton Road, which is anticipated for this summer. And the CMP will then go out for public review of progress to date. Next slide, please. So next steps, once we have the locally preferred alternative from the CMP, we can finalize bus station locations and environmental analysis and identify local funding for ongoing operations. Dan, was there another slide? If you wouldn't mind. Thank you. And the planning phase of the BRT project will be completed by July 2021, if not sooner. And at that time, we will be ready for application for federal funding. And this federal funding is through the Capital Investments Grant, the CIG, through the Federal Transit Administration. And this CIG program does not compete with other multimodal or roadway improvement projects identified by the region. The BRT is currently the only project that is eligible for CIG funding. And being in the CIG project development phase, which we're in now, means it is in the pipeline for construction funding. And while it's not a guarantee that our application will be awarded, the project development phase gets us halfway there. And with that, I would love to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, are there any questions? Ms. Whelan?
Thank you for your presentation, Busy. I certainly appreciate it. When you talk about the funding, are you saying that you would add that to the A.D.A. or how how does that work with the partnership?
So there's a total project cost and definitely would be looking for partnership opportunities to fulfill the local match portion. So CIG is eligible for an 80-20 match, 80% federal, 20% local. We are seeing it funded at more of a 60%, 60-40. But we can have 80% of the project federally funded, so fulfilling that, you know, additional 20% in this scenario with other federal funding sources is definitely a priority for Mountain Line. But the local funding is is definitely yet to be identified. And we are working with our local partners to understand what possibilities are out there.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. And Busy, thank you so much for your presentation and your work on this. Very exciting stuff. I love it. Being from Israel, I can tell you that Israel does a lot of priorities around, like has a lot of priorities implemented around public transportation and buses and trains and really moves people well. And a lot of the things we're talking about today are things that they have already implemented and I think are proving to be successful. So I'm very excited to hear that we're moving in that direction. I was very excited to hear about the bicycle improvement possibilities with the funding. And we'd love to talk to you more about that offline. Busy, have you went back to the slide that had the photos of the different options of the the routes with the with the bikes?
I think even a couple more slides, Dan. There we go.
There was one that had like all, like I think the four options on one page. But basically, you know, when I looked at these different slides, like I was excited that we're talking about bicycle lanes, but it made me nervous to see the bikes amongst the vehicles, knowing that it's dangerous to be riding a bike, especially between vehicles on such a large roadway. So my comment is really simple in that if there's any way we can separate the lane off of the road onto like the sidewalk and almost do like a foots trail on each side. You know, I think the city has spent some time, you know, maybe Martin or Rick can speak about this, maybe even offline. But there's models of which we can take the route, that bike lane off the road and make it a safe, separated lane. That being said, there is still a value to having the bike lane on the road as well. And ideally, we have both because there's really two different types of riders that we need to keep in mind. And and then my last comment on this was just, you know, in general, if we can keep the bikes, I think, further to the sides, I think that's the the safest option for the cyclist. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions on this item? Okay, I don't see, let's see, I do not see any more comments at this time. So thank you very much. Okay. We will go ahead then and move down to item number seven. Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate you as well. We will move down to item number seven, which is the City of Flagstaff Business Retention and Expansion Incentive.
Good evening, everybody. This is John Saltinstall. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
All right. I will try and share my screen here. And I'll get started. So good evening, Mayor Evans, Vice Mayor Shimonie, council members. I'm John Saltinstall, the Business Retention and Expansion Manager for the City of Flagstaff. I'm proposing a tool to help businesses stay here and grow here in Flagstaff, the Business Retention and Expansion Incentive. In this presentation, I'm going to review the components of the program one by one. It's intended to be simple and direct. We're going to cover each one of the bullet points. There's a notice, the last questioning bullet point also shows that we continue to adapt to make this program even better still. In fact, this presentation is slightly different than the one that was in your packet. This is a work session and we just want to know what matters to you and what reflects the community values from your perspective. And we're really looking forward to the discussion today. Our independent businesses, as you know, are the ballast and workhorse of our resilient economy. We need them to stay and grow in Flagstaff. So we're really here about making sure the businesses expand their market share, their productivity in their workforce, and in all ways possible, increase the number of high-wage jobs in Flagstaff. While we are proposing to use this with one-time funding, which has been approved for the 2020-21 fiscal year, we hope that this is ultimately funded annually at $30,000. We see this BRE incentive as a program that will also assist the community a great deal with the rebound. Here are the targeted sectors that are going to be eligible to participate. These should look familiar to you as they represent all of our businesses making a difference every day. And just about every type of business in Flagstaff falls into one of these categories. As mentioned previously, this program is all about helping businesses to stay and grow in Flagstaff and to build resilience. Resilience being the ability to recover readily from misfortune. And it's a quality we seek to develop in all beings and businesses. The here are the basics of the incentive. Retain or create high-wage jobs relative to their sector and be a business within the municipal municipal boundary. And these are going to just guide us into the particulars of the application, which I'll get into on this next slide. The application we see as a chance for businesses to market themselves. The written narrative provides context. The description elaborates upon that context and presents the benefits of the business to the local economy and the community. We ask them to tell us about their challenge and the proposed solution, and specifically what will be addressed by the BRE incentive. How many jobs are being saved or created? The budget and timeline will demonstrate their understanding of their finances and their ability to deliver consecutive results. A current business plan indicates that the business has invested in their future. And direct community benefit refers to elements of giving back to the community on the whole, which we think are very important. Some examples will be presented, excuse me, in an upcoming slide when I get to the reviewing and scoring of applications. These are simple steps here that demonstrate an open access point to the entire community. Submit an application between July 1st and August 31st. Staff will review and rank the applications. And successful applicants will be notified by October 1st. The review team will review each complete application. Then that same team will meet with the top scoring applicants in order to define terms, timelines, and expectations in general. And staff does reserve the right to fund one sole applicant, up to six applicants, or none. So here's the scoring. And forgive me, it's going to be the one slide I read all the way through because it's important. We want to know about the wages. And in terms of the wages, a comparison of the wages that are being retained or created relative to the Coconino County median wage and relative to the average sector wage, because we know those are going to be different for each sector. We often talk about high-wage, low environmental impact jobs. Well, this environmental impact is really where we get a chance to learn about the businesses' impact to water and energy usage and to the community landfill. The direct benefit, a description of any proposed direct benefit to the community, not just the applicant's business, but things such as infrastructure, workforce development, opportunities for residents or students, volunteer work, or some other benefit that the business is able to offer to the entire community. And then match, we've got a matching component. We want an accounting of the applicant's private investment relative to the requested grant amount. There we are. So marketing is a critical step to ensure that the businesses know of this opportunity. Everywhere we can get the message out, city websites, advocacy groups, the incubators, accelerators, newspaper, radio, social media, and repeat. And here is that question from Slide 2 for discussion. And we're thinking perhaps repayment, maybe after three years of a single given award and the businesses met their goals, they're operating at a relatively stable manner, they've built greater capacity and reserves, that business could be invited to sponsor the next round of awards. We're also thinking to use successful applicants in future marketing and find ways to expand workforce development partnerships. That's the extent of my presentation. We'd love to have some conversation about your thoughts and what you like, what you don't like, and what we can make better.
Counsel? There are no public comments for this item at this time. Mr. Odegaard?
Yeah, my question is for John, is the $30,000 that was decided on for this opportunity, how was that decided on the level of funding?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Odegaard, thanks for the question. It really came from a number of discussions with partners and hearing from private businesses over time. I think originally we were thinking a larger amount of money, but with the budget being what it is, we cut it down to 30,000. Some conversations that led to this specifically related to some of the biomedical companies that are starting up in our community. And I heard from one particular company over the last few years, they asked if there were any programs to help them stay here and grow here. They needed approximately $50,000 for clean lab space. I pointed them to all available resources, but we didn't have one to help them. They ultimately located their manufacturing in Phoenix. And incidentally, they came back again this last year, saying that they're trying to get all of their high-wage, low environmental impact jobs in Flagstaff. If they can't, they're going to move to Colorado. And again, it was a matter of approximately $50,000 for clean lab space and an additional $50,000 for other tenant improvements. And we didn't have anything. So really, it was based on that experience that we came up with that number.
Thank you, John. And that's why I'm wondering if the 30,000 is going to be enough because as we know, costs are high, whatever those costs are. And, and you know, try to allocate from a pot of 30,000. And if you have three applicants, well, 10,000 is not going to go very far. And, you know, we want this, you know, we would love to have that manufacturer right here in the City of Flagstaff that wanted to come here. And unfortunately, that did not happen. And so my guess, if dollars can be, I know because of budget constraints, but if we can bump it up a little bit more, so we have some flexibility to attract another person that you just spoke of to the City of Flagstaff, that would be a huge win for the community. And so, and as far as any repayment options, you know, I'm kind of open to that. I, me, I think it's going to be a little bit of a struggle for those companies at first. You know, maybe that could be a negotiations type of thing. And then, you know, as far as some type of commitment, if they do receive those dollars that they have to stay in the community for X amount of years, and then if that's not the case, then there's a repayment opportunity of whatever, you know, kind of like we do with our workforce for the organization when we do for housing. And so something along that lines. So thank you.
We have the Vice Mayor followed by Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, John, for your presentation and your work on this. I'm very excited about your efforts and seeing how this continues to play out. I too have concerns about $30,000 not being fully adequate, but let's start with 30. You know, if that's what we have, that's better than nothing. And I think this is a great idea. I am open to the idea of it being something that, you know, we ask folks to repay into, but I also have concerns about how that's played out, as Councilmember Odegaard shared. And I'm curious to hear what my colleagues think about that and what others' thoughts are on that. But I'm very excited about the direction you're heading in, and I am excited to hear the updates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I take this as a really good program, and I think it could bring a lot of value to the city. But I do have a couple of questions. Is this BBB monies or is this general fund monies? Where's the money come from?
Yes. Excuse me, thank you for the question. This is all from Economic Development Funding, which is BBB funding. That's the origin of the money.
Okay, my next question was going to be, can we afford it? Considering that it's BBB funds, I think we can probably do that more readily. The general fund monies, I presume, are going to be very tight in the next year. But the BBBs, if we have the money, we can do it. So thank you.
Ms. Solis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Props to our economic vitality team and of course, John, our Business Retention and Expansion Manager. This is a good start. You know, it sounds like we, there's a chorus of, you know, much-needed funding to, to make this program going. 30,000 is a good start. I would like to enhance it in terms of maybe leveraging this, this fund, this 30,000, and seek, you know, grants, you know, for this, the specific for purpose of business attraction and retention. And also down the road, develop a mechanism for businesses who receive this funding will have the opportunity to either give the money back or donate, you know, for the purpose of sustainable funding for this, for this particular program. So, you know, after five years, maybe 10 years, you know, reach out to the business who received the fund to give back or make a donation of 100% or a percentage of the money that was given to that business. Thank you.
Ms. Wieland?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Thank you so much, John, for that presentation. And I too will weigh in with concern about the 30,000. I wish it could be 3 million. I really think that you and your department will be instrumental in the next few years to help us get through. And that's another reason that I brought up a discussion about BBB allotments. Right now, you're functioning at 9.5% of BBB, and we know that's going to go down in the next, in the upcoming quarters and years, perhaps. So I think you have a real tough job before you. And I really also know that, that you're going to be so important to our community. So I support you in this. I want it to be more money, and if we can find more money. You know, again, I go back to last year's discussion where council approved a user's tax to fund pension. That will no longer be necessary. Perhaps we could either, if we're choosing to keep that tax, to send it to you to really enhance your programs. I mean, I think we really need to look at options to support you and your department economic, business retention and expansion. So yeah, thank you for, for beginning, but I really would love to see this part of your program grow and strengthen. It's certainly what we need. Couple of questions. Are we limiting the size of the business to receive this? Are we talking about small business and what it would be your definition of small business? When we look at airside companies for Flag Airport, I know that's going to be very, very important, but I really want us to be mindful of kind of dipping into other pots of monies that, that the airport could be supporting with new monies coming to them rather than you taking your bare bones in, in supporting. I hope that makes sense. So just a little better definition on, on who you're looking at, where you're looking at them. And yeah, anything I can do to help you grow that pot of money, I'll be right behind you.
Well, thank you for, for the comments. We definitely appreciate it. And I just want to make a couple of quick points, if I may, that this is really focused on that BRE. So this is about the businesses who are here already. There is a business attraction incentive that's being developed right now as well. And that's really going to be geared towards those businesses that aren't here yet. In terms of the size of the business, we're really hoping that the businesses who are here will see it as a resource. We did not have a size requirement. The Small Business Administration does, as you know, consider any business under 500 employees a small business, which covers most of the employers in our community. But I think we can definitely add some language before coming back to you with this program for adoption next week about the size of the business. And I'm not sure if we're going to be able to find any more money between now and then. But we just are appreciative of the support so far. So thank you.
Ms. Wieland?
Thank you, John, for that clarification. I think it would be important really to, to spend a little more time on the size of the business. And I know you've let, left some, some decisions in there for staff to make as, as you go along. But I really think our small businesses are definitely in need. As far as understanding that this is retention and expansion, I do understand that. But I will always use the platform to speak about the importance of, of what you do and, and how we need to grow this area. So thank you.
Absolutely.
I would like, I would like to go ahead and weigh in on this and just remind the other council members, if you haven't spoken, that means that you are in agreement with the conversation that you are hearing and that, that means this will move forward as is. I would just like to say that I am very interested in looking at the airport general fund monies that were discussed earlier and that were discussed in our budget and to see if we could take some of those monies and utilize them toward this incentive program, especially if we will not need them necessarily at the airport. I'm also interested in making sure that our small businesses are the ones that have access to this money. And when I'm talking about a small business, I am not talking about 500 to 15, 15, 1500 employees. Very specifically, I am looking at businesses that have under 150 employees. That's what I'm interested in. So that's my direction on this. Is there anything else from council? Okay, not seeing anything else from council. We will go ahead then and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. With that, we are now down to our presentation. This is about, the presentation discussion about Community Development Block Grant. I believe this is Ms. Dar. And we will take a break after this particular, after the discussion and direction by council, we will take a break before the next item. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Justine Acosta, your Housing Manager. Today, I have the privilege of introducing to you Christine Pavlik, Today, I have the privilege of introducing to you Christine Pavlik, who is the newest member of the Housing Section. Christine has recently replaced Leah Bloom as the Housing and Grants Administrator. After six and a half years in that position, Leah continues with the Housing Section as the Affordable Housing Development Program Manager. As you may recall, staff was planning to be in front of you on April seventh with recommendations on allocating the 2021 Community Development Block Grant funding. However, in anticipation of receiving additional funding through the CARES Act, staff postponed that presentation, and we are in front of you today to get feedback on the recommendations for both the 2021 CDBG allocation and the additional CDBG CV funding as provided through the CARES Act. Over the last several weeks, Christine and Leah have worked incredibly hard, especially with new HUD guidance coming out daily, and I want to take this opportunity to thank them for their dedication in aiming to get this funding out into the community as quickly as possible. As you will see, staff has not created these recommendations in a vacuum. Instead, we have worked with the Flagstaff community at identifying the most critical community needs. And with that, I will pass the mic to Christine.
Thank you, Justina. Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and Staff. My name's Christine Pavlik, and I am the new Housing and Grants Administrator for the City of Flagstaff. I'm really happy to be with you all here this afternoon. This afternoon, we're going to talk about the Community Development Block Grant Program. We'll start off with a brief recap of the CDBG program. Next, I'll share with you about the city's 2020, 2021 Annual Action Plan process, the proposals that we received from local community organizations, as well as the internal city requests received. Then we will talk about the Ranking Committee's funding recommendations for the 2020, 2021 CDBG allocation. After that, we will also discuss the CDBG CV funds that are provided to the City of Flagstaff by the CARES Act. I'll tell you about how we solicited proposals for these funds and staff's funding recommendations for agencies in our community that are responding to the COVID-19 crisis. CDBG is a federal grant program administered by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD. The national objective of the CDBG is the development of viable urban communities through the provision of the following: provide decent housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunity, all of which must primarily serve low and moderate income persons. Every two years with new council, the Housing Section establishes council CDBG goals. In January of 2019, your CDBG council goals were to provide housing through both rental and ownership, serve those experiencing homelessness, revitalize target neighborhoods, workforce job training and education, including early childhood development. In order to continue to receive our annual allocation, the city must submit an annual action plan, which tells HUD what we plan to do with the funding. It is staff and the Ranking Committee's responsibility to thoroughly review each proposal received to ensure that the activity is both eligible and viable. We also conduct an agency risk assessment, and then we provide recommendations to you based on the Ranking Committee's results for you, council, to make final funding decisions. As you are aware, CDBG requires extensive public participation. To date, the city has held three public meetings. Our first meeting regarding the 2020, 2021 Annual Annual Action Plan was held on January thirtieth, when we notified the community of the availability of funds and opened the proposal process. We received proposals from the public and internal requests until February twentieth, and held a second public meeting on February twenty eighth to review the proposals that were received. Initially, we intended to present and discuss 2020, 2021 CDBG funding recommendations with you in early April. When we were notified by HUD of the allocation of additional funds to respond to the COVID-19 crisis through the CARES Act, housing staff determined it was best to reevaluate the proposals received for their potential, for their potential to respond to the impact of COVID-19 on the Flagstaff community. We decided instead to come back to you today with recommendations for both the 2020, 2021 CDBG allocation and the CV allocation. Initially, the draft 2020 Annual Action Plan was available for public comment from March first to April first. After reevaluating the received proposals for their response to urgent community need created by the COVID-19 pandemic and learning of waivers made available by HUD, staff decided to change the funding recommendations for the 2020 CDBG allocation and made a new draft annual action plan available to the public from May sixth to May twelfth. One of the waivers that was made available by HUD in order to allow for an expedited process of awarding funds and getting them out into the community as quickly as possible was a change to the public comment period from thirty days down to five days. As part of conducting a risk assessment, it is important to remember that the city is the responsible entity to HUD. Because of this, the Housing Section and the Ranking Committee take multiple items into consideration when we review proposals. For example, we review the agency's past performance and success, and success measures and their organizational experience. We also review the agency's financial capacity and potential for timeliness of expenditure, and we ensure that their grant request is realistic. In addition to the risk assessment and to your priorities, the Ranking Committee evaluates each proposal in their separate categories and scores them based on matters such as the number of people served, the agency's leverage abilities, collaboration efforts with other community organizations, and community needs based off of data from the consolidated plan. This year, staff also examined proposals for how their proposed projects respond to the impact of COVID-19 on the City of Flagstaff and its residents. So, how much money are we talking about? The 2020 entitlement is six hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars. Program income is the city's revolving loans and is comprised of returned interest-free loans from our owner-occupied rehabilitation program and from recaptured funding from our First Time Home Buyer's Assistance Program. With the city's current program income and reallocated funds at forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars for the 2020 program year, we have in total six hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars in CDBG funds to be allocated into our community. So, how much funding are we talking about for each category? Here is the formula for allocation distribution. There is a twenty percent cap for administration and compliance. As you can see reflected in the slide, the estimated indirect rate for the city is ten percent. And I'm sure you're looking at this slide, trying to do the math and saying it doesn't add up. We wanted to let you know that this number comes from finance. The calculation for this indirect number takes ten percent of our current year allocation while estimating the upcoming year's program income. It's important to note that we do not pay indirect on indirect. So, this leaves the city with close to sixty-five thousand dollars to administer CDBG contracts and to abide the federal regulation compliance. These are items such as environmental reviews, Davis Bacon and Fair Housing requirements, everything needed to administer the funds in compliance with the federal regulations. Next, let's address the public service cap. Now, typically, we can only fund public service projects with up to fifteen percent of our allocation per HUD's cap. Public service provides operational assistance to agencies. However, due to COVID-19, HUD has actually waived the fifteen percent public service cap for 2019, 2020, and CV allocations for projects that respond to, prepare for, and prevent COVID-19. This year, we received three public service proposals from three local nonprofit organizations. The first is from Flagstaff Shelter Services for a programmatic expansion of their Housing as Healthcare program. This program is designed to meet the comprehensive housing and healthcare needs of individuals and families experiencing a housing crisis. Flagstaff Shelter Services is requesting operational assistance for staff salaries and funds for bus passes for participants. The second is from Threaded Together for their Sewing and Textile Employment Pathway program. They are proposing to provide a nine-month-long paid apprenticeship and employment trading program to three low-to-moderate-income individuals and domestic violence survivors. We also received a proposal from Tinkertopia for a job training program for three low-to-moderate income individuals who would receive training with one year of paid employment at Tinkertopia, working with the executive director to expand STEAM opportunities to the community. Under the Housing Activities category, we received two, two proposals from Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona. The first is a proposal to rehabilit, to rehabilitate the house at Sharon Manor. Currently, the house serves eight individuals in a congregate living facility. These residents currently share bathrooms and a kitchen and congregate living space. Housing Solutions is proposing to remodel these rooms into separate studio apartments with their own restrooms, kitchens, and individual entrances. This allows them to serve families instead of just individuals, as well as allowing them to serve a mix of men, women, and transgender individuals all experiencing homelessness due to domestic violence. The second proposal from Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona was for the acquisition of a newly-built condo to be rented to a household in need of permanent supportive housing. Though this project would likely only serve one to two households during our HUD reporting requirement timeline, it would continue to serve households in need of permanent supportive housing beyond that timeline as well. In the past, when we have had additional CDBG monies available in this category, staff has approached capital improvement for infrastructure projects in target neighborhoods. This year, capital improvement staff approached housing and asked for funding for a project providing infrastructure improvement, improvements in La Plaza Vieja. This project is in line with the 2015 La Plaza Vieja neighborhood-specific plan and would calm traffic on Clay Avenue and provide safer pedestrian crossings for residents of La Plaza Vieja while also improving storm drain locations. You'll notice the ranking scores to the right of each proposal. These scores come from the Ranking Committee. The Ranking Committee does not rank internal projects, as the city is responsible for all of the administration and oversight of the expenditure of funds for internal projects, and therefore, they're considered no risk. Staff's 2020 funding recommendations for projects in the public service category are to fully fund the proposals from both Threaded Together and Flagstaff Shelter Services. Again, we're able to use over fifteen percent of the city 2020 CDBG allocation for public service because of waivers provided by HUD lifting that cap, as long as those public services prevent, prepare for, and respond to COVID-19. Flagstaff Shelter Services and Threaded Together have both included within the scope of their projects how their program is preventing, preparing for, and responding to COVID-19. Though the program was created before the pandemic began, Flagstaff Shelter Services' Housing as Healthcare program provides both housing and healthcare services to individuals experiencing homelessness and at high risk for COVID-19. These funds would be used for staff salaries as well as COVID-19 testing co-pays and personal protective equipment, as well as motel room rental for vulnerable clients. Threaded Together will be including the production of personal protective equipment for hospitals and community organizations in the STEP program. They have partnered with Flagstaff Medical Center and the Northern Arizona Volunteer Medical Corps to design and construct thousands of washable, reusable face masks and gowns to be used for frontline healthcare providers during the COVID-19 crisis. Under the Housing Activities category, staff is recommending full funding for the Housing Solutions Sharon Manor Rehab Project. This project not only expands the availability of housing for individuals and families surviving domestic violence, but it also responds to the COVID-19 crisis by creating individual apartments, eliminate, eliminating the potential for exposure to and spread of COVID-19 between clients living in congregate care. Additionally, staff is recommending that the remaining funds be allocated to the partial funding of infrastructure improvements in La Plaza Vieja. This project is in line with the LPV Neighborhood Plan and provides neighborhood revitalization in one of the city's designated target neighborhoods. Additionally, there has been discussion regarding infrastructure projects serving to stimulate our local economy. Now, before we discuss these recommendations, I would like to share with you the recommendations for the CV funds so that we can discuss the funding possibilities in one large picture. For the CV funds made available by the CARES Act, staff felt it was important to make efforts to eliminate risk in federal spending while also expediting CDBG CV dollars to the greatest need. Housing staff contacted six local nonprofit agencies who provide essential community services and have successfully administered City of Flagstaff CDBG-funded projects within the last six years. Three of those agencies submitted agency needs assessments detailing urgent needs for responding to, preparing for, and preventing the COVID-19 infectious disease. The three agencies that did not submit a request for funding sent responses stating their support for the requested CDBG CV projects. Staff also considered an economic development project at length with Economic Vitality staff. Together, we concluded that there were more urgent and pressing community needs identified by outside agencies. The City of Flagstaff allocation from the CARES Act is three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. In addition to these funds, staff is recommending a de-obligation of 2019 CDBG funds from the owner-occupied housing rehabilitation program. The staff member administering this program is retiring on July first. And given that the program requires staff and contractors to go inside of people's homes, the program needs to be redesigned to incorporate new safety measures necessary due to COVID-19. We see this as a pause to this program and not an end. While we want to put these dollars towards more immediate needs now, we intend to take time to redesign the program, and we'll have it available again in the future. As you can see, the city is waiving the ten percent indirect rate and utilizing ten percent of the allegation for administrative, administration of these funds totaling thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and forty cents. That leaves us with just under five hundred thousand dollars for allocation into the community. Flagstaff Shelter Services requested funds to serve six hundred medically vulnerable and high-risk individuals with alternative shelter in motels to purchase personal protective equipment for staff and clients and additional staff salary needs for expanded services. Catholic Charities has requested eighty thousand dollars for their PATH program and homeless services. While many folks experiencing homelessness are avoiding shelters and choosing to remain outside due to COVID-19, Catholic Charity's goal is to ensure that they have adequate access to resources and engage them to secure treatment and housing services in the community. They will serve five hundred and sixty individuals with these funds. In Coconino County Health and Human Services has requested a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for eviction prevention services for low-to-moderate-income city residents. At least ninety households will benefit from these funds. With the CV funds allocated to the City of Flagstaff by the Coronavirus Relief, Aid, and Economic Security Act, staff is recommending funding each of these projects as close to fully as possible in order to provide crucial services to community members impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Also to note, at the April twenty-fourth, 2020 budget receipt, retreat, council directed fifty-nine thousand dollars in City of Flagstaff general funds to be used for eviction prevention by Coconino County. Should council provide direction to do so, these funds can be leveraged with the CDBG allocation and administered in their combined entirety as one program contract between the county and the City of Flagstaff. Those funds are not indicated in these recommendations, but should council choose to provide this direction, staff will be asking for action on May nineteenth, along with the resolutions approving the 2020 and 2019 amended annual action plans. We are now available for any questions you may have and to ask for your direction for the allocation of these funds. We are asking council for direction on whether you would choose to have staff return May nineteenth with resolutions incorporating council guidance and for approval of submission of our 2020 Annual Action Plan and a second amendment of the 2019 Annual Action Plan incorporating the CDBG CV dollars. As you can see, these recommendations include over one million and doll, one million dollars in funds that can be allocated into our community.
Before I take council comments and direction, I would like to go ahead and take public comments. I will first go to Chair Archuleta with the Coconino County Board of Supervisors. She is District Two Supervisor, and then I will take the public comment card that we have. Ms. Archuleta?
Well, thank you very much, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. Thank you for the opportunities to speak with you about the Community Development Block Grant Pass Through Funds directed at COVID-19 Housing Services. I'm here representing the Coconino County Board of Supervisors and speaking on today on their behalf as well as Coconino County. The City of Flagstaff and Coconino County have a long history of working together to serve our citizens through fires, flood mitigation, and now the health pandemic. Above all, we are a community that is well-known for being caring and giving. As government agencies, it is our responsibility to not only meet the legal requirement of our offices, but just as important, the humanitarian spirit. What we do now for our community will be remembered forever. The decisions we make will have an impact on many. This is when our community needs us the most. They are looking for us for solutions and answers to the tragedies of sickness, fear, and unemployment. As you all know, the county has been on the forefront, having been the first county to provide sheltering for the housing insecure while they undergo testing or recover from COVID, to establish a drive-through testing at no charge, and we have, and we have conducted contact tracing, health education, and guidance, and we have expanded our mils support to our seniors to seven days a week. In addition, we immediately established a COVID-19 call center, which has handled over three thousand, two hundred and seventy-two calls. And to your decision today. And to your decision today, the county has been providing rental and utility assistance to those experiencing the disease or have suffered job loss or reduced hours and have no means to pay for their rent, to keep a safe place for them and their families to reside. Since March 23rd, the county has received 1,800 requests for rental assistance, which has been over a tenfold increase. To date, the county has served 312 families or individuals, spending about $200,000. We are here today to ask for your support of staff's recommendation to provide $164,000 from CDBG pass-through funds to the county's rental assistance program so that we can continue to serve Flagstaff residents. With these funds, we will be able to help 90 to 150 families that are Flagstaff residents. We also understand the county will be considering another $59,000 in funds from your general fund, and we are very appreciative of this consideration as well. The county also supports the other CDBG funding recommendations, which resulted from a consensus reached by the housing sector of the Social Safety Net Services Coalition. This coalition was established by the county and United Way of Northern Arizona to support the nonprofit community and to address the dramatic increases in requests for housing, food, and emergency cash assistance. I applaud Sarah Dar, who is a member of the coalition, for bringing forth this funding opportunity to the coalition's housing sector, and I applaud your support of the funding recommendation. I also applaud the housing sector members. Yes?
One second. We reached our three-minute time limit, but I would like to hear what you have to say. Could you please go ahead and finish?
Oh, that's very kind of you. Thank you. I am almost done. I just wanted to thank you all for the staff's leadership and for your leadership in this recommendation. I think what it does, and also the social service safety net recommendation, I think it just shows that our community's social service providers are continuing to work together to best meet the housing needs of the community. So I want to thank you for considering helping us respond together during this crisis to help keep our community in their homes and reduce the stress our residents feel during this difficult time. We are in uncharted times, as you know, but together we can and should be there for our community. So I'll just finalize this by saying thank you, Madam Mayor, for the ability to speak on this important item today. I again ask that you and the council approve the recommended CDBG funding so that our social service providers can continue to work together to address our community's housing needs during this critical time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Drum, I believe you have a card?
Yes, I do. This, the public comment card reads as follows. Kathleen Preston, Agenda Item Number Eight Block Grant. Dear Mayor Evans and Council, I am glad that the city is moving forward with getting funds together to get homeless into hotel rooms where they can self-isolate. I would urge you to use your position as council members to help secure a hotel for rent or purchase that has a reasonable price and meets all health department needs. I know that Ross Altenbaugh, manager of the Shelter Services, is working with a few different hotels, but in her meetings with the county, she expressed that the price per room was significantly higher than the $50 a night at the Aspen Hotel. The more expensive the rooms, the less far these grants will go. Please do what you can to get a reasonable deal on whatever hotel situations are out there. Also, I urge you to utilize your position to put pressure on our state and federal government to get reimbursement funds for the hotels we need. The state still has money allocated by the feds for coronavirus relief, and I think now is the time to ask for that money. We don't want this outbreak to get any larger. Thank you. Katie Preston.
Was that the only card?
Yes, on this item it was.
I just want to verify with staff that the recommendations for the CDBG dollars that would also include our COVID dollars are what is available and what is being shown right now on our screen. That is what is being recommended for funding.
Thank you for that question, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Yes, so what you can see here are the first four are CDBG 2020 dollars and the last three are CDBG CV dollars. The recommendations are in the, are all added up, max out those funds. All that's missing from this slide are administrative funds and indirect funds.
Okay, thank you. Okay, again, also thank you, Ms. Archuleta, for joining us and for speaking on this topic. Council, we are looking for direction. City staff would like to bring something back for us to vote on next week, and we're looking for direction with regards to this slide and what it is we would like to fund. Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I know that the, we're putting people up in hotel rooms so that they can be isolated and not pass the virus amongst themselves. I guess my question is, is there enough money in this, the way we've allocated this on the screen right now, to continue that program for very long? Because I would not be surprised if this situation lasts for quite a while. So I'd be interested in knowing, comparing the need and what we're allocating and how those two kind of level up to each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. That's a great question. So my understanding from the Executive Director of Flagstaff Shelter Services is that she is currently spending about $30,000 a week in hotel motel costs, but that she is possibly able to receive funds for this purpose from other sources. I don't know if Justina or Sarah have anything to add about that?
Thank you, Christine. This is Sarah Dar, Housing Director. Mayor and Council, we all would love to have more funds available and know that what we have now, please know that what we have now is greater than we anticipated having, and we trust in our partners to spend those dollars frugally and diligently, as we know they do every year when awarded funding.
I guess that partially answers my question. My concern is that we're going to run out of money for helping homeless people, and I guess, what's the plan? What do we do when the money runs out? And when will it run out? Or if you know?
Well, we don't know, because we don't know, and the conditions that we're in are changing, as I know you are aware, are changing weekly, if not, if not daily. And so through the coalition that Supervisor, I guess I should say Chair Archuleta, forgive me, mentioned, is a community planning, community planning is one of the activities that we have spoken about. And right now, I believe the last of the individuals experiencing homelessness were moved out of the shelter just last night, and that we are all looking towards the future, and our partners are working diligently in order to spend as little money as possible, while understanding that the expenditure of funds is necessary in order to prevent transmission of as many cases as we can. So there are other potential funding sources. Yesterday, HUD allocated CDBG money directly to the states. However, the states only got the awards yesterday, and as we know from receiving our award in early April, guidance came out basically daily, changing what we could and could not do. HUD was not particularly ready to administer such a large amount of money and kept saying, "Hold on, hold on, we'll get you more details, we'll get you more details." I anticipate the same thing is happening with the state allocations, except that perhaps some of the answers have already been discovered through working through some of these things on the local level. There's also some money from the state of Arizona that I believe both the county and the other housing providers in our community are examining how to get ahold of. There's also been great partnerships with the Arizona and with the Arizona Community Foundation and other funding sources. So please know that while this sounds like a very, very short-sighted answer, it is only short-sighted because the information is changing so quickly and that we are planning as far into the future as we can.
So Mayor, I might just close with saying, I'm just wondering out loud if certain things, just to give an example, La Plaza Vieja infrastructure, I'm not sure exactly what that's for. Maybe that's money that should be held back in case we need it for keeping people separated and in a, under a roof.
And so you could give that direction now. That's what, that is what the city staff is asking for at this particular time. Is there asking for direction? Are you okay with the recommendations as they are, or would you like to see some things different? So if you believe...
Before I can answer that, I would like to know, what is the La Plaza Vieja infrastructure? What is that going to do?
Staff, can you please repeat that part of the presentation for us?
Absolutely. Essentially, the infrastructure updates are to calm the traffic on Clay Avenue to make it safer for pedestrians to cross. It includes sidewalk ramps, drainage movement in order to better have rain and floodwaters drain, updates of that nature.
So I would suggest that that one be held back and that we reserve those funds for keeping people separated and under a roof.
I would ask city staff and legal, I'm not sure that we can say held back. I think that we need to direct where we would like that money to go, but it is possible we could say that we just want to hold it back. Legal, city staff?
I'll let Sarah or Justina jump in.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mayor, this is, that is completely possible. Yes. We do, so what I'm understanding the request is to not allocate that funding, but rather let it sit until we know a better definition of what the needs are in the coming months. Yes?
I believe that's what Mr. McCarthy is asking.
Yeah, that is my suggestion. I'd be interested in what the rest of the council thinks.
We can do that functionally within HUD. We can leave an unallocated, we can leave an unallocated amount. We would have to come back to council in order to put that money towards anything, but of course, that's entirely possible.
Okay. We have, you're welcome. We have Mr. Odegaard, followed by Ms. Wieland, followed by Ms. Salas.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the agencies that was reached out to ask for a needs assessment was the Guidance Center. Could someone speak to, was there a request from the Guidance Center at all? That was my first question.
Thank you, Mr. Odegaard. So the Guidance Center sent an email basically stating their support for the other agencies that requested funds and indicated that at this time, they won't be pursuing any CDBG funds directly. But they do have partnerships with Flagstaff Shelter Services and I believe Catholic Charities.
Okay, that was kind of good to hear. I was a little concerned that the Guidance Center wasn't receiving any funding, just because in my own personal experience, I've seen things happen in the community where I thought maybe there would see an increase happening at the Guidance Center because of COVID. And so I was a little surprised, but if they say they don't need anything at this time, I will go with their wishes. As far as Councilmember McCarthy's request about concerning La Plaza Vieja, I'm not sure. Have they received fundings in the past, La Plaza Vieja, of these type of dollars? I guess is that my next question?
Yes, La Plaza Vieja has had CDBG funds utilized for infrastructure updates. I'm pretty new, so I'll let Justina and Sarah speak to exactly what those projects were, or Leah, if she's available.
Mayor and Council, this is Sarah Dar. I'm going to go ahead and jump in, ladies. So it's important to note that the, that the money is not to go to Plaza Vieja Neighborhood Association, but rather towards improvements in the Plaza Vieja neighborhood as set forth in the Plaza Vieja Neighborhood Plan, and that that money would go to capital improvements in order to be matched, not matched with, but be put with other funding in order to go towards the project. So has money been used in this manner before? Absolutely. There's been new park infrastructure in the Plaza Vieja neighborhood and also improvements to Blackbird Roost.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. I'm going to hold back of deciding, of holding back or reappointing dollars if we need to in the future from the La Plaza Vieja recommendations, just because I get emails from that community concerning crosswalks and things like that. They get a real struggle of trying to get crosswalks painted in that neighborhood to try to create a safe environment for pedestrians. So I'm going to hold back of any recommendations of moving any dollars from them, what's already been recommended. So, thank you.
We have Ms. Wieland, followed by Ms. Salas.
Thank you so much for this very clear presentation, Christine. I want to wish you, or just say welcome, and well-done presentation. A couple of things come to mind. So out of this final list, we see that Tinkertopia has been dropped 100% of their request of $100,000. That concerns me. I also understand, so if I weigh that need versus the sewers and the things in Plaza Vieja, I, I just think that the monies that actually touch people first should be allocated, and perhaps not to the extent. With that being said, I, I have heard that there's a possibility of a CARES Act two coming out, and once again, Build America bonds would be offered. So that could definitely take up that slack in the infrastructure. So something to think about. I do, I do want to support all of these things. Councilmember McCarthy, I, I agree with your concerns that those monies could be put aside, and I'd, I'd like to see that being done. And I think that's it. So excellent work. Thank you very much. I, I would like to see Tinkertopia at, at least thought about again, if we're going to pull that 200,000.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Wieland, and I really appreciate your welcome. Just to kind of let you know how things went with the ranking committee, ultimately, the ranking committee felt like Tinkertopia was a risky organization because they are new and their application, their proposal scored quite low. Additionally, in order for us to go over our 15% public service cap, we do have to make sure that the projects are directly responding to COVID-19. We can continue conversations with Tinkertopia about how they may able to, may be able to include that in the scope of their project, but at this time, it was not clear how that could be done.
Thank you for that clarity.
Okay, we have Ms. Salas, followed by the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I just want to clarify, the, the request from the Flagstaff Shelter Services, that has provided temporary shelter for the, our vulnerable citizen, mostly, or some of them are veterans, elders, families overcoming domestic violence, and teenage, teenagers transitioning out of foster care. And this vulnerable population are not tested positive, so they, they just need shelter in place. There's another hotel that's, that's contracted with the county that's dealing with quarantine and isolation. There's another hotel that's, that's contracted with the county that's dealing with quarantine and isolation of either positive for COVID-19 or have been tested and waiting for results, or first responders who, who may have been exposed to the COVID-19. And I've been, I've been, you know, as, as an individual, council member have been involved with Flagstaff Shelter Services, connecting first with the two motels on the west side of town, first tick of April. And then just over the weekend, identified the third hotel to be able to provide temporary shelter for the Flagstaff Shelter Services clients. So, so effectively, you know, our, our community have been working with four different motels to either respond to, prevent and address the impact of COVID-19. My, my position on the CDBG 2020 and CDBG CIV recommendation, flag, fund, that the, the last, one, two, three, four, fund, everything with, with one, with one major change. I believe La Plaza Vieja neighborhood need that infr- infrastructure. Because I am, I take the, the, the drive through the neighborhood almost every day before, you know, we, we stayed, we stayed at home. And during rush hour, the neighborhood gets busy as, you know, traffic from downtown will bypass, you know, Milton to go to the, to West Route 266 and drive through that neighborhood. So I believe La Plaza Vieja neighborhood need that infrastructure and it benefits, you know, over 2,000 residents in the area. So my proposal is to fully fund the Plaza Vieja infrastructure to 200,000. And then, take, and housing solutions, also 200,000. And then the rest of the line items, I, I'm in agreement with staff recommendation in terms of allocation. Thank you.
We have, now have the Vice Mayor, followed by Ms. Whelan.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome, Christine. I'd like to start off by just thanking you and your team for your work on this, and also all of our community partners who are working tirelessly right now to support our most vulnerable Catholic charities, Flagstaff Shelter Services, and a host of others, the Guidance Center, too many to, to name, but I think our community is really coming together right now to help our most vulnerable, and I'm very excited about. And also with the county's partnership, of course, to hear about the most recent news about our shelter being emptied and people being put into housing, or starting to hotels and motels. I like the CDBG plans. I feel comfortable and good about the the amendments to the 2019, 2020 Annual Action Plan. I like the recommendations by staff. I also have questions about La Plaza Vieja and those funds, and I'm wondering if it needs to be done through CDBG funds, or maybe we can find a different money source, maybe in one of the other relief packages to address the needs of that community. But I do think we need to address the needs of that community. And if it does come down to CDBG, then I'm open to it. But in this whole process that we're going through, both with CDBG and also just with our decisions moving forward and funding that we're receiving in the future, I think it might be, you know, a good idea for council to take a step back at a later date and look at, potentially looking into making, putting together a plan with the City Manager's Office and, and really kind of really scoping how we prioritize the funding that's coming in. You know, are we building infrastructure? Are we supporting people in need? And just really figuring out how we can best impact our community positively with the money we spend and reallocate and receive. I, the only other comment I wanted to make was, you know, I'm thinking ahead to when we have everyone in hotels and motels. Like, what's the next step to get them into housing? And do we need to, you know, allocate funds to that effort to get them from, you know, that place to, to their own home? Or what's going on there? But I'm comfortable with the plan at the moment. Thank you.
We have Ms. Whelan, followed by Mr. Aslan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing up the concern about the infrastructure. It was, again, my suggestion that we do have the enterprise funds that do pay for sewer, wastewater, all of that, stormwater. And, and yet, we're using CDBG funds for doing that work. So that was my point. Also, my point was that there is a strong belief that there will be another CARES II Act that will look at those needs for, for states and for counties, those infrastructure needs. Can you explain to me how crosswalks and, and I, I know that community needs it. I'm just suggesting that we find another avenue to provide that infrastructure work, rather than, right now, we're in an emergency mode. And that I believe these monies should be directed to that emergency mode. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whelan. I just wanted to add that there was a second allocation of funds through the CARES Act. Those CDBG dollars were in, provided to the state. For that second round, all of the allocations were provided to states. We're unsure just yet how the state intends to, you know, divvy out those funds at this time.
You know, we have had the conversation with the county, and I believe that they're willing to look into and work together with us to see if some of that 75% reimbursement could be used for our nonprofits. We just don't have those answers yet. So that's, that's another avenue that we're looking at to, to fund those needs.
So we're going to go to Ms., Mr. Aslan, followed by Mr. Odegaard.
Hi, thank you, Madam Mayor. So in terms of the direction, I'm, I don't see any compelling reason to deviate from staff recommendations here. I want to thank everybody who put so much hard work into these recommendations and for the thorough and detailed reporting out that just occurred. I am not interested in Councilmember McCarthy's thoughtful idea of holding back on the Plaza Vieja, Vieja, Vieja infrastructure program for, for some of the same, similar reasons that Councilmember Odegaard mentioned. And yeah, you know, in terms of the infrastructure plans, you know, Flagstaff still needs to, to address its, its other types of wounds and needs now and in the near future. As we combat this emergency, we have to be able to juggle a couple balls at the same time. And so I don't want to lose track of that, and that's my personal direction for you. Thank you.
Mr. Odegaard?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to reiterate that I am fine with the recommendations that was presented on this screen that we're looking at, and so that's my recommendation. So, thank you.
I believe that everybody is weighed in but me. Is that correct? I will go ahead and say that I appreciate the, the teamwork that went into the creation of the CDBG recommendations. I wanted to ask Sarah Dar, because I was looking for it as we spoke, but I could not find it. Can you give us the background on CDBG? We get it because we are a city of a certain size, but there's also more to it than that. It has to do with our populations and the neighborhoods, does it not?
Mayor, this is Sarah Dar. Thank you for that question. CDBG we receive because we are what's called an entitlement community, which is a community with a population of over 50,000 individuals. We got CD, we started getting CDBG back in the mid-'90s. And our allocation is based on a formula that is rather complex, but it takes into account the number, the, our population, number of people in poverty, number of households in need of food assistance, that type of thing. It's a fairly complex formula. And yes, part of the CDBG planning process is to designate target neighborhoods. And those are neighborhoods where more than 51% of the individuals living in those census tracts are low to moderate income households. So yes, there is a, there is a tie to that. And neighborhood revitalization, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead and finish.
Neighborhood revitalization is partially why staff recommended it, is to answer to the neighborhood revitalization that is part of council's goals for CDBG and is an eligible activity within the program itself. But of course, we're happy to receive council direction in any way.
So is Plaza Vieja one of those neighborhoods?
Yes, Mayor. Plaza Vieja is one of the target neighborhoods. The target neighborhoods in Flagstaff are Plaza Vieja, South Side, Pine Knoll, and the Sunnyside Neighborhood.
Okay. So I, I guess I want to just put a finer point on, on my comments for council and for everyone who's listening. I think that it's very important that we do not, and this is me, this is how I hear the conversation. I apologize if that's not the conversation that we've had. But we seem to be talking about unsheltered people versus a neighborhood. I know I heard the words "infrastructure" versus "are unsheltered." And I want to make sure that we step away from that. I think we can actually do both here. I think the recommendations here address both. It addresses neighborhood conditions that stem, quite frankly, from years of racial, racial, quite frankly, discrimination in certain neighborhoods that have not had the same access to certain things, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, things like that, and crosswalks. It helps address some of these legacy issues that we've had here as this city. But it also helps address the fact that we're in the middle of an emergency, and we need to make sure that unsheltered people are sheltered appropriately, where they also have a chance at being able to live. So I want to say that when you look at these recommendations, I think that they, that these recommendations take that into consideration. Now, without a doubt, we need more money. Every year when it comes to CDBG, CDBG funding, we need more money, which is why the, the project in Plaza Vieja hasn't been done yet. We were able to get additional CDBG monies because of the COVID pandemic. Now, it's my understanding, at least what I heard, is that the second round of CDBG monies went to the state. You know, our state right now is sitting on over $2 billion in federal relief aid that has not been dispersed and has not been spent. I think this might be a conversation that we need to sit down with the county and other partners and say, we need additional dollars. We know that the monies that we're allocating through this process are only going to assist in keeping people in the hotels for, what is it? I think I read on six to eight weeks, or six to 10 weeks, eight to 10 weeks. So that gives us approximately two months to go and get the additional dollars that we need. Because most likely, this pandemic that we are in is going to last longer than the next two months. But I just really want to make sure that council, I guess, overstands what I'm trying to say. In that I don't, as we move forward and we try to allocate limited resources, I think trying to pit one group against the other group, and again, if I am using that words, those words too strongly, I apologize. I just want us to really take a step back and be mindful of that. So, there's a comment. Mr. McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I agree with your comments, and I want to thank the council for considering my idea. I, I do have concerns about the, the ability of us to keep people safe. But at the same time, I totally agree that La Plaza Vieja needs these infrastructure changes. I've walked through there and driven through there, and I'll admit it, I've, I've cut through there from time to time. And because of that cut-through traffic, they probably are even more in deserving of some traffic control measures. And so I just don't want anybody to think that I'm not supportive of La Plaza Vieja, because I am. I totally am. And I guess, as everyone in council knows, these decisions from time to time can be very difficult, and this is another example of that. So, let us move on.
Okay, well, I feel that staff got direction on this. If there's no more comments, we are going to go ahead and take a short break. I would say that-
Mayor, could I quickly clarify?
Yes.
Mayor, this is Sarah. Sorry, for some reason, my typing and comments isn't popping up on the screen. So just to clarify, so that we are completely clear, we're going with the staff recommendations as reflected on the screen in front of you now. Yes?
Yes, that's what I heard. That's the majority.
All right, that's what we heard too. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you for the opportunity to clarify.
Okay, we are going to come back at 5:15. We are down to item number nine of our work session agenda. This is consideration of the environmental management fee restructure and the water resource and infrastructure protection fee.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nicole Antonopoulos, Sustainability Manager. Just checking to see if everyone can hear me.
Hello? I believe we can.
Fantastic. I am here this evening with Neil Chapman, Forest Health Supervisor, to discuss the proposed environmental management fee restructure and the introduction of the Water Resource and Infrastructure Protection Initiative. Our presentation will provide the council with a beef background on why we are here this evening. We will then go into more in-depth information about the existing environmental management fee, including the proposed fee restructure and customer impact examples. I will then hand the presentation off to Neil to discuss the Water Resource and Infrastructure Protection Initiative. Then we will highlight how both these initiatives complement other city efforts, our community outreach efforts, and the proposed timeline for the ordinance to come back to city council for consideration. Setting the context for today's discussion. For the last few years, sustainability staff has been working with the city finance and legal teams to develop a proposal that would distribute the environmental management fee more equitably among municipal services customers. Following direction from city council at the February 2020 budget retreat, staff are proposing to restructure the fee. Also discussed at this retreat was the Water Resource and Infrastructure Protection efforts, which require a stable, long-term funding mechanism to main our watershed, maintain our watersheds and existing infrastructure. To ensure that we are providing city council and the community with a clear picture of today's discussion, staff is proposing a restructuring of the environmental management fee, but not to increase the annual revenues brought in by the fee. The revenues would remain flat, but they would be distributed more fairly throughout the community. The Water Resources and Infrastructure Protection Fee would be a new fee. The reason staff are presenting these items together is twofold. First, these fees would be assessed through the Monthly Municipal Services Bill. And second, the programs supported by the fees are intrinsically linked, supporting and advancing numerous city plans and initiatives. I'd like to provide council with a beef background on the environmental management fee. The fee was established in 2002 to fund citywide environmental programs. The fee is currently authorized in the Solid Waste Code and assessed at $4 per month in what is now called the Municipal Services Bill, but formerly known as the City Utility Bill. in what is now called the Municipal Services Bill, but formerly known as the City Utility Bill. The fee has remained flat since it was established 18 years ago. For reference, in fiscal year 2019-2020, the fee generated just over $1 million for the Environmental Management Fund. The fund provides revenues to five of the six Sustainability Section program areas, the Flagstaff Fire Department, and fees for the Greater Flagstaff Forest Partnership. You may be wondering why we would propose a restructure of the fee if we aren't trying to raise revenue for the Environmental Management Fund. Well, the fee is intended to correlate between environmental and natural resource impact and the programming necessary to mitigate these impacts. In many cases, the fee is not distributed equitably among service addresses because the fee is directly linked to each municipal services bill or account. So, for example, a single-family home with four residents is assessed at $4 per their monthly municipal services bill, while a high occupancy housing unit, let's say of 150 residents, may also be assessed at $4 because they have one municipal services bill. A specific example in Flagstaff is a high-density housing unit with approximately 900 residents, who pays only $20 per month for their five monthly bills. Additionally, the city has core service customers per contract and/or miscellaneous billings, and these customers currently do not pay the fee at all. The current environmental management fee assessment places a disproportionate burden on certain community members. Staff is proposing to replace the current flat $4 fee per monthly bill to a consumption-based assess rate of 3.5% on charges from our core services, which include water, wastewater, reclaimed water, stormwater, trash, and recycling. The 3.5% assessment or fee would keep the Environmental Management Fund revenues at their current levels. Fees would continue to provide revenues and resources to protect and enhance our core services. With a consumption-based rate, customers do have the opportunity to lower their monthly assessment by consuming less, specifically water. An example of the consumption-based assessment on a typical residential customer that consumes 3, uh, 3,500 gallons of water per month, the fee would be reduced by $1.97 per month. Now, for the residential customer that consumes 10,000 gallons of water per month, their fee would increase by 77 cents per month. Before I provide a commercial account impact example, there are a number of variables to consider with our commercial accounts. Because of this, the example provided to council currently is based on a commercial customer that has a six-yard city trash bin and a four-yard city recycling bin, both of which are serviced two times per week. So for the commercial account, a customer that consumes 3,500 gallons of water per month, the fee would increase $6.30 for a total of $10.30 per month. For the commercial customer that consumes 10,000, uh, 10,000 gallons of water per month, their fee would increase by $8.39 per month for a total of $12.39 per month. Now, before I hand the presentation off to Neil, I want to let council know that I will be providing a combined example of the Environmental Management Fee and the Water Resource and Infrastructure Protection Fee after Neil has finished with his portion of the presentation. With that, Neil?
Thank you, Nicole. The Water Resource and Infrastructure Protection Fee will establish a fund to support the Wildland Fire Management Program. The Flagstaff Watershed Protection Project Bond, a project-specific funding source, will be fully spent within six to 10 months. Staff are presenting two options to council for consideration, and we are seeking direction tonight on which of these two options to move forward. Option one is to fund the program. Option two is to fund the program and strategic wildfire risk reduction. Um, a unique opportunity exists for us to continue the Wildland Fire Management Program as we, as well as watershed protection efforts. With option one, we recognize the importance of the Wildland Fire Management Program, the only local fire and fuels management resource reporting to city leadership. With option two, we carry forward the efforts of the Flagstaff Watershed Protection Project as envisioned by the people of Flagstaff. And just like in 2012, we recognize that solving this problem is up to us. Next slide, Nicole, please. Oh, no, I think uh, there you go. Yep, thank you. Of primary importance is option one, establishing a sustainable, stable, long-term funding source to support the Water Resource and Infrastructure Protection Initiative via the Wildland Fire Management Program. This will relieve financial pressure on the sustainability program and general fund. Option two includes funding the Wildland Fire Management Program plus funding for Upper Lake Mary Watershed Forest Treatments and Green Infrastructure Protection Efforts. This option is being presented due to the proposed 2020 bond election being postponed. It provides a way for council to continue efforts to plan, implement, and monitor forest treatment activities in this important watershed. Reductions of hazardous fuels in the Upper Lake Mary Watershed will help Flagstaff avoid the costly impacts of catastrophic fire. All right, next slide, please. Thank you. These numbers are estimates to show the scope and scale of impacts to customers. Option one is the funding of the Wildland Fire Management Program. It is anticipated that the average single-family home using 3,500 gallons of water per month will experience a cost of $1.82 per month. Option two includes wildfire risk reduction efforts in the Upper Lake Mary Watershed. This option will increase the Water Resource and Infrastructure Protection Fee by 52 cents per month for the average residential water user starting on July 1st, 2022. The additional customer impact for the average single-family home would be about $6.50 per year. Since 2012, two surveys and two focus groups have indicated that Flagstaff residents are willing to pay roughly $50 per year for the services provided by the Water Resource and Infrastructure Protection Fee. Back to you, Nicole.
Great, thank you, Neil. Council, what you have before you is a combined impact summary for a typical residential customer that consumes 3,500 gallons of water per month. With the consumption-based environmental management fee and the Water Resource and Infrastructure Protection Fee, the total assessment for option one would be $3.85. This is actually 15 cents less than what a single-family resident is currently paying for the environmental management fee. For option two of the Water Resource and Infrastructure Fee, the monthly cost would be $4.41 per month, a 41 cent increase from what they are currently paying for the environmental management fee. Now, providing an example for a typical residential customer that consumes 10,000 gallons of water per month, with the consumption-based environmental management fee and the Water Resource and Infrastructure Protection Fee, for option one, the total assessment would be $9.97 a month. For option two of the Water Resource and Infrastructure Fee, the monthly cost would be $11.57 per month. The services provided by these programs allow the city to continue on a trajectory of community and municipal efficiency, resiliency, and preparedness. They help advance many existing plans and initiatives. They align with more than 20 policies in the regional plan, too many to list out during our presentation, but they will be noted in the staff's summary for the June 2nd council meeting. They also support city council goals of high-performing governance, safe and healthy communities, sustainable and innovative infrastructure, and livable community. They advance the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, including strategies in three focus areas, including public health and safety, water resources, and natural environment. They also advance goals in equity, resiliency planning, and building systems that allow for regenerative capacity. They adhere to the Wildland and Urban Interface Code and advance the Greater Flagstaff Community Wildfire Protection Plan, as well as support the Rethink Waste Plan to reduce contamination in our recycling stream, organic composting, and food waste prevention. Staff plan to vet the proposals to the Open Space, Sustainability, and Water Commissions. We will conduct outreach to the public through social media, the community forum, videos, electronic mailings, and of course, contact our key program partners. The ordinance will be presented to city council on June 2nd for the first read and June 16th for the second read. Thank you, council. Staff are here to take questions and of course, are seeking direction on which option they prefer for the Water Resource and Infrastructure Protection Initiative.
Nicole, can you please put those um, options back up on the screen?
Of course.
Ms. Wheel, uh, excuse me, um, Ms. Drum. I believe that there's probably a comment on this item?
There it is, yes. How do you, Mayor, council, and staff? I support the restructure of the environmental management fee and adding the Water Resource and Infrastructure Protection Fee as part of my city utility bill. My rough estimate indicates that with the inclusion of these proposed changes, my monthly city utility bill will decrease by $1 to $2 a month during winter low-water use and increase $2 to $3 a month during summer slash high-water use. That's an easy investment to support important programs and projects. After retiring from a career with the Coconino National Forest, eight years ago, I volunteered with a successful Prop 405 campaign, which funded the Flagstaff Watershed Protection Program. As a small investor, I further invested in FWPP and other city projects by purchasing Flagstaff municipal bonds. I continue to volunteer with the Forest Service and FWPP. I also commend the Flagstaff Fire Department in maintaining a robust wildland fire forest health division. I look forward to working with Neil Chapman and Paul Trovi as I extend retirement congratulations to Paul Sommerfeld. The city of Flagstaff will continue to be a significant leader and partner in forest health. Respectfully submitted, Karen Malice Clark, 63 West Pine Avenue, Flagstaff. And that is the only comment we have.
Okay, Lizette. Okay. Um, Mr. Odegaard?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just have a kind of a question concerning process of this discussions with option number two. We back as you, as was presented that we gave direction for um, option one concerning the um, Water Resource and Infrastructure Protection. But this option two came about from the agenda that we are receiving today. Did any point during this process, the city council gave direction of adding an option two? Or is this all staff slash management-driven? That's my question. Did this come from the city council for option two? Or did this all come from staff slash management-driven?
Councilmember Odegaard, this is Rick Tatter, Management Services Director for the city of Flagstaff. Uh, this was an option that the internal team discussed over the last couple of months. Understanding that uh, the ability to do a bond to the voters for November ballot, we thought it was appropriate to give council options. Uh, I think council always likes the options uh, for moving forward with projects that we, as a city, would like to move forward with. So, we're presenting this option versus going back to the voters in 2022 for another ballot measure. And this is just a different way to finance those types of large projects that our community needs. Um, by not selecting option two, uh, those projects will deferred, be deferred until a potential future bond election or other funding source. Uh, but the fee increase does not take place for a couple of years uh, because we wouldn't issue the debt right away. Um, so we, we still have time before that increased fee would come in place. But, long story short, this is really a internal discussion with uh, fire staff, uh, water staff. They have some projects that they want to protect their infrastructure with uh, and, and other staff here.
Okay, thank you, uh, Rick. Um, so I'm gonna say I am not in favor of option two. Uh, we had a discussion concerning the bond question. It really broke my heart that we could not put the housing one for this year on the ballot um, because of COVID. And so with that, I am not in favor of option two either at, at this point. Will I be in favor of bringing it back at some point in the future? Yes, but at this time, with COVID and also not doing any bond questions this year, I am not in favor of bringing option two forward. Uh, I, I really want to thank uh, for creating fairness concerning the environmental management fee for all the residents and Flagstaff. Appreciate it. Um, so I'm in favor of that. As far as the Water Resource Infrastructure Protection, I had uh, given direction. I was in favor of an option one for maintenance um, concerning uh, wildland around the Flagstaff to protect uh, the city and also to protect all the money that was spent on FWPP. And so, uh, so that's my uh, feeling that um, I'm in favor of the environmental protection what's been proposed. I'm also in favor of option one, and I'm not in favor of option two right now. So, thank you.
Mr. Ashland?
Thank you, Mayor Evans. Um, you know, this is kind of interesting, uh, given the conversation that we just wrapped up. I think I'm uh, well, first of all, let me say that I'm really excited about these scenarios and the sliding consumption um, weighting that has been brought into the equation here. I think that is uh, incredibly appropriate, and I'm fully supportive of it. I'm gonna go ahead and throw my support, uh, and my full endorsement behind option two. And uh, I understand where councilmember Odegaard is coming from. Um, but interestingly, I have to go back to our previous conversation talking about uh, you know, balls, uh, juggling balls in the air at the same time while we manage a crisis and uh, while we strive to manage our current needs and uh, prepare for our future needs, independent of the COVID-19 outbreak and all of the issues that that uh, is, is uh, bringing to us. Um, our watershed protection needs are, are not going to shrink. They're only gonna get more urgent and uh, and they're gonna continue to be something that we need to address into time immemorial, really, frankly. Um, and I think uh, the, I don't have the slide in front of me with the, the numbers right now. I think it's a few slides back in terms of what's being shared on the screen. Um, you know, uh, in a moment when we'd otherwise see a reduction and uh, we're sort of compensating for that by uh, doing what we need to do to prepare for the future. And those numbers are only going up uh, marginally because of the reduction that we would otherwise be looking at. I think this is the perfect moment for us to um, grab the bull by the horns and stay on top of this issue. Uh, so I don't need to belabor that point uh, any further, but I, I really do think that we need to be in front of the ball in this one and uh, continue to maintain a proactive approach to our forest management. Option two, thank you.
Mr. McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, I want to thank staff for uh, coming up with this proposal to make the uh, environmental fees more equitable based on actual usage. That's completely consistent with my philosophy. Um, and then as far as option two, I do support option two. And the, my thought processes are that it's gonna cost an average household something on the order of $2 a month, which is pretty minimal. And it's gonna bring a lot of benefit, and that's protecting our water supply. So I think of this as like an insurance policy that we need to ensure our water supply is safe. And a couple of dollars a month, uh, I think is a very reasonable price. I'm certainly willing to pay it, and I think most of Flagstaff people would. So uh, in summary, thank you, staff, for the foresight, and I do support option two.
Council, I'm looking for the rest of you to weigh in so that the staff can bring back um, the actual ordinance that we'll be voting on. back the actual ordinance that we'll be voting on. This is where we provide direction. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everybody, for your discussion on this topic and C-staff for working on this and bringing this to us. I'm also very excited to see this move forward. I'm comfortable with option two. That's our map. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm gonna keep my, I'm not gonna agree with either one of them, and I'll just keep my ball rolling here. And this is why, I truly believe that sustainability needs to be funded and needs to be funded well, and I do believe that that should come out of the environmental fee that we currently charge at $4. With that being said, I also believe that we have really not looked at all our options to finance our watershed, the protection of our watershed, and to do this under the, it just doesn't make sense to me why we're doing it under the guise of water services and, and water resource. That's enterprise fund, it's, it's funding itself, we're gonna be looking very soon about raising other rates, and our stormwater rates are going up, so I do not want to raise any rates for our community. I do believe there are other options, options like environmental impact funds that we haven't even discussed, that would bring in other or partnerships to pay for this ongoing protection of our watersheds in a healthier way. So, I really don't think we've, we've been given all the options that we possibly can't and that we've jumped on the easier, softer way of raising, raising rates, and I'm just not willing to do that. Thank you.
Ms. Solis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We are living the hard times. You know. $3.85 a month may be, you know, affordable to a lot of people. $385 a month is spending pinching to some. $385, $3.85 a month may, may not be affordable to a lot of people. So I am in sync with Councilmember Whelan who eloquently articulated what I have in mind. So, I, I believe yet we have to find other options aside from these two options presented to us today. Thank you.
So I'm gonna go ahead and weigh in, and I just want everyone to know that it doesn't look like we have any direction on this item. So far, you have two individuals, I believe, who are interested in one, you have three individuals who are interested in two, and then you have two individuals that are interested in something other, right? And so I just want to say that in looking at the sheet, I myself was interested in option one. I do want to be very clear that I know that we are in the middle of a global pandemic, we are in the middle of an economic crisis, and that we have been very clear that we do not want to add to expenses. So we held off on putting items on our, on the ballot that would be looking at raising taxes. But this particular item, I'm sitting here trying to figure out what is the cost of the destruction of our watershed? I do realize and I do appreciate, you know, the sentiment that there are other things that we could be looking at. I'm just sitting here trying to figure out why those other things were not part of the discussion, because we've been discussing this for months. This is not something that just recently appeared on our work session, this is something that we have been discussing for months. We were discussing this before the global pandemic, and the reason why we were discussing this in this nexus had to do with trying to make sure that our watershed and our water source, especially our surface water, was protected. When the Schultz-Pass Fire happened, we lost access to that water, that part of our water portfolio, for something like, I believe it was almost two years. It was between $4 and $6 million to fix that pipeline, and we had to go through NEPTA and environmental studies and things like that because of where that pipeline was at. We decided that we wanted to make sure that the Lake Mary watershed, that area was protected. We went out to our citizens, and we as citizens, because we are all citizens too, we voted to tax ourselves to make sure that we could do that. That particular funding source is coming to an end, and we want to make sure that the work that we have done to protect our city's water source was protected and maintained, which is why we tied it to our water department in this way. So it looks like now we are, do not have clear direction. Again, there's three individuals that are interested in, or maybe two individuals that are interested in one, three that are interested in nothing, excuse me, in two, and then two that are interested in other. My math doesn't seem like it's adding up right. But at any rate, I would just say to the city manager, what would be the way you would move forward with this conversation from here?
So, it is a little bit across the spectrum here, council's input, but I do want to point out that it seems that five council people, Madam Mayor, are in favor of the Water Resource and Infrastructure Protection Fee, the differences which optioned. But, so I, while we don't have a clear consensus on any one strategy, it seems like we do have clear consensus that seeing the fee put into place is a good idea, and there's just a question of how much that fee should be and what it should cover. One suggestion might be to just further the dialogue with those who were in favor of option two and perhaps validate or affirm that they would be in favor of option one if that's where the majority consensus lies.
You know, thank you for saying that, because that is a different way to look at this, right? There are five of us that are interested in some type of fee and two of us that are not, so there is a majority that's interested in a fee. Now, if you look at that majority, it seems like it's weighted in the, the option two, but maybe council would like to then open up a conversation between option two and option one. Council? Mr. McCarthy, did you have, did you have a comment?
Yes, I, I put my little C in there for a comment. As I said before, I support option two, but if I can't get enough consensus on option two, I would certainly support option one as a fallback. My other comment is that if there are council members that think that we need to find other sources of revenue to protect our watershed, my question to them is, what are those other sources? In other words, it's so easy to just say, yes, I'm against something, and it's much more constructive if we can hear ideas of alternatives. And I guess another alternative is just ignore the problem. So if there's ideas, I'd like to hear them.
Ms. Whelan?
Councilmember McCarthy, I had just mentioned environmental impact funds. Colorado used one, it was called the Colorado Wildfire Environmental Impact Fund. I just sent that on to Mr. Tatter and to Nicole for their viewing. That's just one of the options that, that are available. These impact funds, environmental impact funds are available, and, and I'm not sure why they're not being considered.
So, I, I appreciate that idea. I guess I don't understand it. Is that a fee that would be paid on top of other utilities or a sales tax, or where, where would the funding actually come from?
You know, what I would prefer is that we allow our staff to look at this and perhaps come up with options. This is not my expertise, but I do do my research into things, and this is, Rick, maybe you could speak to that as a possibility?
Thank you, Councilmember Whelan, for sharing that information. I'll have to take some time to take a look at it. I don't know if this is a bond financing program that still needs a revenue source to pay these back, or if it is one that really has a funding to put toward projects in our community, but I do appreciate you sending me that, that information, and we can do some research between now and the June 2nd meeting.
Thank you. And again, this was just one of the seminars that I've been taking, looking at water infrastructure and options to fund that during recession times. So I really think that, that we just need to step back rather than so quickly passing it on to our consumers and, and look at the options, and I want to thank you, Mr. Tatter, for, for being willing to do that.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for the discussion on this topic. I'm fine with option one, for sure. I think it's a good plan, and I just wanted to throw this out there that I'm also open to the idea of raising the, the fees on users of 10,000 and above. So I don't know if that can even play into the equation to make, make the smaller users not have to pay as much, but I just wanted to throw that in there. Thank you.
So, City Manager, would it be that you, Mr. Odegaard?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'll just defer my comment. I think I already gave pretty clear direction for my comments earlier, so thank you, Mayor.
So in going back to what the City Manager said about the fact that it looks like there's five individuals who are interested in moving forward, the Vice Mayor has indicated that he could be either for option one or option two. Mr. Tatter has said that he will go and get some more information regarding the environmental impact funds, and looking at it quickly on Uncle, Uncle Google, it looks like it's a bonding source, but I could be wrong, and he would bring back that information. So as we further this conversation, we would have that. Is that enough direction for this time?
If it is. I am not sure that we heard from Councilmember Aslan, who was in favor of option two. If there was a follow-up comment about option one, I failed to take note of that, but we do have a majority at this time.
Yeah, I'm not gonna cut off my nose to spite my face. I'm not, option two or bust. If option one is what we can achieve right now, then, then I'm fully in support of that, but I, I really do adhere to the logic of protecting our watershed now, we could have an incident any moment, and I think it's a priority to fully fund and the effort of watershed protection, and what we have in front of us is a tool with which to do it, and we should be utilizing it. But definitely supporting option one in a vacuum, sure.
Okay, well, does that help, City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you so much, and thank you for a very thoughtful discussion, and we have a direction, and there will be a reporting back on the query that Ms. Whelan advanced as well.
Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and move on then to item number 10. This is a self-insurance of workers, compensation and insurance renewals.
Can you see the insurance renewal slide?
Uh huh.
Okay. This is about a 25-minute discussion, and with that, let's just jump right on it. So a little bit of what we're gonna talk about is the background, history of the premium we've paid over the last six years, the difference between deductibles and retentions, a little bit about workers' compensation, and then considerations both for travelers' insurance and for the Arizona municipal risk retention pool, and at that point, I'll open up for discussion and input. This evening's discussion is actually a $10 million discussion. Over the course of the next five years, we will expend approximately $10 million to cover all of our insurance needs. Just to give a little bit of background on this year's renewal process, our property insurance carrier, AIG, non-renewed our insurance coverage for our property. That's unusual in that a carrier would non-renew a line of coverage, and has not happened to the City of Flagstaff, certainly not in the last six years. They non-renewed because we did have a major claim, a roof loss of council chambers, which costs approximately $600,000. In addition to that, the property market in general had been hardening or increasing in costs and a decrease in the amount of coverage available, and we anticipated a 15% increase, but not the non-renewal. At the same time, our workers' compensation carrier, Copper Point Mutual, who we met with in December, and we met with vice presidents there who assured us that they were in this for the long haul and that this year's bill would not be an issue. However, on February 13th, we received a call from the same vice presidents who indicated that they were withdrawing from the firefighter class code 7710 in the state of Arizona due to the cancer presumption law. So we had two non-renewals at the same time, which quite frankly, I've never had occur in my career. Last year, we did tell council that we anticipated a 15% increase in our workers' compensation coverage, or approximately $80,000, and a 15% increase in our property coverage, or approximately $40,000. Excuse me, claims management versus risk management. Prior to six years ago, the City of Flagstaff was engaged in claims management, meaning the primary focus was after we had an event, what we did with it, where we sent it, some of the things that we did to mitigate it after the claim had actually occurred. We were seeing double-digit increases on an annual basis. And then six years ago, we changed our focus to that of risk management, proactive training, proactive programs, and the result was this, in 1314, we were expending approximately $2.25 million to cover our insurance needs. That was actually reduced to last year to just a little less than $1.5 million. And if we were to look at just the workers' compensation portion of that alone, that premium has gone from a little bit north of $1 million to just a little bit over $500,000 over the course of those six years, even though our payroll exposure that the insurance carrier prices on has gone up approximately 24%. That is entirely due to our employees, those folks in the field, support of senior leadership and supervision, all working together as a team. support of senior leadership and supervision, all working together as a team. That brings us to this year. So this year, over the course of the balance of this presentation, we will have quotes and pros and cons to Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool, or AMRRP, and Travelers Insurance. The good news, if there is any, is that we are still well below where we started in 1314 in terms of total premium. City of Flagstaff carries broad types of insurance. It ranges from property who historic, over the last four years, has been insured with AIG, liability auto and crime insured with Travelers, excess with Travelers, airport liability with another carrier, and workers' compensation has been with Copper Point Mutual. Deductible versus self-insured retentions. This is really, uh, a super important piece to our discussion this evening, and I'm going to try to make it to where even I can understand it, um, as it's rather complex. When it comes to property insurance, deductibles are always deductibles. And what that means is since it's our property, there's no third party involved. If we take a $25,000 deductible, then we pay the first $25,000. And that's pretty simple. But when we get to general liability, auto liability, police liability types of claims, then there's deductibles or self-insured retentions. Again, a deductible, what that means in those three areas, general liability, auto liability, and police liability, is that we pay nothing in terms of the legal fees, and we only pay in the event that there is a settlement or, uh, if the claim is paid through the litigation process. As opposed to a self-insured retention, where we pay all of the legal fees. By example, if we had a claim where we had $50,000 in legal fees and $25,000 is what we ultimately paid on a claim, we would pay the entire $75,000 on a $75,000 self-insured retention. However, if it were a deductible, we would only pay the $25,000. So let's talk about property insurance deductibles first. Today, we have a $25,000 deductible. It is staff's recommendation that we move to a $100,000 deductible for our property insurance. And both AMRP and Travelers Insurance have quoted a, uh, $100,000 deductible. But when I talk about Travelers, um, what I really am indicating is Travelers allowed us to carve out their property. So I'm really talking about a Travelers option where the property insurance would actually be carried by Liberty Mutual Insurance. AIG has been, again, our property insurance carrier for the last four years. And if we were to select the Travelers option, the insurance carrier would actually be Liberty Mutual for the property portion of that. Historically, uh, again, current carrier non-renewed, we've had a total of three property losses in the last six years. And if we were to take a look at the difference in premium from a $25,000 to a $100,000 deductible, over the last six years, we would have saved a little over a quarter million dollars. So again, staff recommends that that deductible be moved to $100,000 on both AMRP or the Travelers/Liberty Mutual combination. General liability, today we have a $75,000 self-insured retention. So literally, we pay everything, uh, fees, uh, legal costs, any settlement, up to that $75,000. It is a recommendation that if we go to Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool, that we move that to a $250,000 deductible with a $500,000 aggregate. What that means is that under the Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool policy, if we were to have the worst year we have ever had by far, the most that we would pay on claims would be $500,000 and $250,000 on any given claim, but the legal fees are all included. With Travelers, the recommendation, if we were to select that option, is to move to $150,000 self-insured retention. In the self-insured retention, again, we pay all the legal fees and any settlement and expenses up to the $150,000. On the auto liability side, today, we have a $75,000 self-insured retention. With the Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool, we would have a $100,000 deductible. Again, the legal expenses are outside of that and already covered. With Travelers, we would move to $150,000 self-insured retention, and legal fees, claims, and expenses would all go against that $150,000. The Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool only offers a deductible in these two categories, general liability and auto liability. And the highest deductibles they offer today are the ones that staff recommends should we go to Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool. Between these two, we've only had one auto claim and three general liability claims that have exceeded our self-insured retention over the last six years. With Travelers, a net of any increase, we would have saved 300, over $300,000 in premium. And with the Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool with deductibles, we would have saved almost $600,000 in premium. And the difference, the big difference here is in the legal fees, that's the offset. So those are the deductible, $250,000 with the pool, and SIR of $150,000 with Travelers, our staff's recommendations, depending on who we choose. On our umbrella coverage, today, we carry $20 million in umbrella or excess coverage, over the top of our $2 million. So for any claim today, we have $22 million in coverage. It's staff's recommendation that should we move to AMRP, we take the $13 million that they offer, along with a $2 million underlying, for a total of $15 million in coverage. And Travelers has quoted the same, $13 million in excess coverage, on top of the $2 million underlying, for a total of $15 million in coverage. Over the course of the last six years, it's approximately $100,000 in premium savings. We have had no general or auto liability claims that have, have exceeded $200,000 in the last six years, and one that was just under 1.5 billion in the last 10 years. But I will tell you that that is before we were doing risk management, early intervention, uh, before we had a litigation team that approached each claim very, very early in the process. It is staff's recommendation to reduce the coverage, and it is also included in the proposals and pricing that we've received from AMRP and Travelers Insurance. Workers' compensation, approximately a half a million dollars is what we expend today. Whether we go to Travelers or AMRP, that will be in excess of $700,000. The AMRP, uh, proposal is actually includes a small deductible, and that total cost is also included in the $749,000. Good news is, on workers' compensation, the risk management portion has worked. Employees have worked extremely hard and very well together. Management has supported, the directors have been on board, and we've reduced our recordable employee injuries by nearly 50% per year over what it was just six years ago. There are two types of claims that impact us on a rather substantial basis. One is post-traumatic stress disorder claims, PTSD. And the other is the cancer presumption law, that when passed, its total impact will be unknown. There is one thing we do know, we will have more claims than we have today, and they will be at a greater cost than our historical claims. We did, early on, look at self-insuring our workers' compensation exposure. We ordered an actuarial study. That study was completed, and what it said is that we would need, at a 90% confidence rating, meaning that nine out of 10 years, we would have sufficient funds. We would need approximately $700,000 in order to fund our claims. When asked what impact the cancer presumption would have on their actuarial study, they gave a range of $300,000 to $600,000 in addition to the $700,000 to $750,000 in the claims that we have today. Because of the cost and because of the unknowns at this time, it is staff's recommendation to not consider self-insuring today. So the question is, is it AMRP or Travelers? And how do we make that decision? So to help us with that, I'll walk you through some of the considerations between the two. Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool has a certificate tracking program that would be made available to us for free. Today, we do that manually, and we have been looking at a certificate tracking program to put in place that would cost us approximately $5,000. So with the pool, that's a $5,000 value. AMRP has a free windshield replacement. On an annual basis, we anticipate, uh, at least $5,000 in windshield replacements. So far this year, we have had two fire engine, uh, windshield replacements, and each was $1,000. That's a little out of the ordinary, but again, estimated a $5,000 benefit. Legal fees are included. $50,000 to $100,000 is a very realistic savings that we would have on an annual basis. And should claims increase for whatever reason, excuse me, that savings would also increase. The pool has land use liability coverage. Although there is a subject, uh, co-insurance, uh, what that means is we pay 20% of any claim up to a million, and the pool provides 80% of a claim up to a million dollars. And they have a land use assistance line. This allows either our attorneys or staff to reach out to legal counsel for guidance, maybe another set of eyes, another way to look at a land use liability issue for free. With Travelers, we have a known claims practice. They have embraced our early intervention of claims. We have a great working relationship with our claims personnel, and we have the ability to select attorneys. Travelers has supported every decision we have made to select any attorney that we wish, that we believe is going to represent the City of Flagstaff in the best manner possible, taking into account the type of claim. Travelers is $185,000 less in premium. We have excellent relationships with our underwriters, and because of our loss control and risk management efforts, pricing will have a tendency to be more sensitive to our loss control. What that means is, is because we are written as a standalone. So our policies, our, uh, commitment, our claims follow-up, our, um, transparency website with our police department, all play into pricing considerations for the underwriter. With the pool, that would have a tendency to be blended into the pool itself, and we would not get the same underwriting credits with the pool as we might with Travelers. Other considerations, when it comes to, uh, personnel claims, because they're a deductible program, all legal fees are covered. So if there is an EEOC position statement to be written, which might cost us $6,000, $8,000, $10,000, $12,000, that would actually be already covered with the pool. Personnel, uh, liability claims, council is also included. And actually, what they have is a hotline where we can call and, uh, seek legal advice outside of our own legal counsel to have a discussion on a personnel-related issue. This is early intervention and is free with Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool. The pool is likely to have a coverage commitment when it comes to the workers' compensation arena. Because the pool ensures so many municipal governments that have the firefighter classification, it is extremely unlikely that they would withdraw from the workers' compensation market, regardless of what PTSD or cancer presumption claims might do. They would simply assess, uh, where they were from a financial perspective and charge premium to cover that perspective. And I'm going to leave the dividend potential for last, and I'm going to talk a little bit about Travelers. So early claims intervention is supported. Uh, they have worked with us, uh, locked up in, uh, our efforts to intervene early in a claim and have those claims. In some cases, um, legal counsel, plaintiff's counsel has dropped claims. In other cases, we have settled the claim very early in the process. They've assigned a single-point senior adjuster. With the pool, we would have, uh, six adjusters. Depending upon the type of claim, we might get a different person on four different claims with four different adjusters. And with Travelers, the workers' compensation is $40,000 less for a guaranteed cost program. But the wild card considered with the pool is they do have a dividend program, the Travelers does not. So with my former entity, I was with the pool for 11 years. I was, had the, uh, privilege and the honor to serve on the Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool's board for approximately three years. And back then, I can tell you that we had discussions of, are we going to pay a million dollars or maybe $2 million in dividend to the members in any given year? Over the last two years, the pool has paid all-time record dividends of $10 million in each of the last two years. And members receive substantial dividend returns. There is no guarantee of a dividend, and there have been years where the pool has struggled to pay a dividend. But that's the wild card. How is the downturn in the economy going to affect that? Is there an increase in claims on the horizon that may affect that? Those are all unknowns. And with that, there's lastly the financial consideration. It's $185,000 difference between the Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool and Travelers with Liberty Mutual taking the property insurance coverage. And with that, I'll open up to any questions that the council may have.
Okay, I see, um, no public comment for this item. Um, I see Mr. McCarthy first, followed by Ms. Odegaard.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Um, when you deal with insurance companies, there's basically two parts to it. The first part is you pay them money for insurance. And there's never any problems with that, it seems. The second part is, when there's a claim, they have to pay out. That's where you can have the problems. And I have, uh, personal knowledge with Liberty Mutual, and my experience with that company is that they will go to extraordinary effort to avoid payments. And I won't go into any detail unless anybody wants me to. But I'll put it this way, I will not vote for any contract that involves Liberty Mutual. So therefore, I support the AMRP alternative. And there's a lot of other reasons I think that that's actually a better alternative. But that's, that's my position.
Ms. Odegaard?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, my question is, uh, for, uh, Dean.
My question is for Dean is, you know, city of Flagstaff or a certain population size, can you give us any examples of like cities here in Arizona that have gone one way or the other of whether the pool or going private end? Do you have any references, what other cities have done with our size?
So there are, thank you for the question. There are, City of Goodyear is with the pool. The town of Buckeye is with the pool. Surprise has been with the pool. I'd have to check to see what their status is today. But in terms of going the other way, there have been smaller entities who have left the pool. That is out of the ordinary. And I do know of one entity that's gone back to the pool. But in general, larger entities eventually grow to the point to where they leave the pool, and they self-insure to larger extents. And so instead of a $150,000 SIR, they might have a $250,000 or $500,000 self-insured retention. So I-
And at this point, you're not recommending that for us as a community or organization for self-insuring?
No, I am not. There are too many unknowns at the moment. And the first step in that process over time would to be gradually move up to either higher deductibles or higher level of self-insured retentions. And regardless of which side of the coin you were to go here, the pool or Travelers, they, the recommendations both include increases.
Right, okay. So that's our two choices, whether the pool or Travelers. And, and of course, they both have benefits. They both have downsides. And so I'm going to withhold my decision till maybe the other members of my colleagues will comment on this issue. So, thank you.
Counsel, we're looking for direction. Counsel? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm curious to pass the mic over to the city manager for a minute and just kind of hear his thoughts on this, if that's all right.
Mr. Clifton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counsel, first, thanks to our risk manager, Dean, for his hard work. This was an excellent presentation and well researched. It's a bit of a predicament we're in right now with, for a couple of reasons that Dean has pointed out. One of those is that our private carrier did drop our account, our coverage this year, as, as they did with a few other Arizona jurisdictions in anticipation of pending legislation. That probably lends itself, or underscores, rather, my leaning toward a risk-sharing pool. I think we always have a little more exposure with private carriers in that regard with, with the lack of continuity. When, when there are a lot of claims, or in this case, in response to legislative proposal, they are in the business of profit. And so that may drive their decisions to whether they want to continue their coverage. I, that, that leads to my second point, which is I, I do favor a risk-sharing entity for the last reason that was articulated by Dean in his presentation. And that is the potential for dividends. I did not know that the numbers behind the dividends until he made reference to them. I think, you know, that's a significant benefit to us. And it is, you know, in, in either case, we're either going to be paying into a private carrier's profit or we'll be paying into perhaps excess reserves that then are funneled back to member jurisdictions in the form of dividends. I would, that would be my preference. All in considered, though, this is a tough one. And I want to thank Dean Kokenauer again for his hard work. And I don't think any of us are going to lose sleep on whatever decision is made. So you have my input, and thank you very much.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. Honestly, I'd like to, like to hear what you and others have to say and your thoughts are. I'm still on the fence.
Counsel? Mr. Odegaard?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, city manager, for your comments. And again, thank you to Dean. And thank you for all the discussions we've had on this. Again, it's, could go either way on this issue. And I'm thinking, at this point, just because we, of unknowns that are out there, whether it's the economy or certain legislation, that I would be more in favor of going towards the pool. And so that's my direction. So, thank you.
Ms. Aslan?
Yeah, well, I was just about to say the same thing. This is a little overwhelming. It's outside my wheelhouse. But I've been trying to pay attention and look at the details and the pros and cons. It's, it's very much seemed like a 50-50 coin toss. But the city manager's insight was invaluable for me. And I also understand the instinct of councilmember McCarthy, where he's coming from. And I think that was echoed by the city manager, too. I'm, I'm, I would not lose any sleep making the choice for the pool.
Thank you. Ms. Solis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm leaning toward the Risk Retention Pool. Because I'm looking at, you know, the, the value that it will provide compared to the other option, including legal fees. This included in the, in the pool. Include, it includes land use liability coverage and the land use assistance line, which the other option does not, does not provide. I do highly value the input from the city manager and Dean. And I shared Mr. McCarthy's experience dealing with insurances, insurance companies. So Risk Retention Pool for me. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Whelan, would you like to weigh in?
Yeah, I, I would go with the pool. Thank you.
Okay, and I, too, would lean toward the pool. So I believe that we have an unanimous support for that. City manager?
Thank you, again, for thoughtful discussion. Thank you, Dean Kokenauer, for your work. I don't want to be the only one to speak to this. If there are opinions of anybody else at staff level, that would be well accepted. But at this point, we're hearing pretty clearly from council, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are now down to item number 11. Item number 11 is COVID-19 update. We do have an addition to this section. The first one is item number A. This is a discussion regarding the Forest Service recreation site reopening. Then we are going to have a item number 11B, which is a discussion about potential state litigation. I think during that time, Jack can give us an update as to the governor's press conference that he had at 3 o'clock today. So first up is Forest Service?
This is Greg Clifton, and I will simply kick this off by noting that you have in your packet, I believe, a bulletin or communication that came from our local Forest Service, regional director who was soliciting input, I believe, and, and just putting out a feeler with some suggested reopening dates of, of some of the facilities that are in proximity to the municipality. So we have forwarded that to you. It generated enough interest by council that we decided to target it for discussion. So that's my introduction to this. It, it, the email, or the communication that I referenced is an email from Matt McGrath dated May 8th. And again, soliciting input. So this is an opportunity for council to weigh in, and I will take good notes.
It seems as if the Grand Canyon is opening on Friday, I believe it is. So I guess my question is to counsel, is there further action we want to take on this? Ms. Odegaard?
Thank you, Mayor. I read that, I guess it was, maybe it was an email or a letter, what is happening with the Forest Service concerning the different campground sites. To me, it seems very thoughtful. And there seems like they are not going to take risks. They're going to keep certain things still closed, especially group Ramadas, things like that. And so I think what is, what they're presenting, to me, seems very thoughtful, reasonable. And I really don't want to add any other comments than, thank you for the information. So, thank you.
Mr. Shimonie, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, a couple of things, really just, my biggest concerns are around their, their bathrooms and their just operations. You know, I just think that folks are definitely not taking the virus seriously today. And we are going to see, you know, a second, maybe a third wave in the not-so-distant future. And my question's, just to, you know, go back to them, is how are you planning, like, what are you doing differently in regards to your bathroom facilities? And how are you going to ensure that those facilities are as safe as they can be? But yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else on this topic? Okay, perhaps Jack could weigh in with regards to the state legislation and what happened today? Before we do that, Ms. Whelan?
Mayor, I, I again support waiting for the decline in numbers for 14 days and, and then taking action after that decline happens.
Thank you, Ms. Whelan. Okay. We will go ahead and move on to Jack.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Jack Fitchett, Management Analyst, the City Manager's office. I'm just going to give you a very quick update on the governor's press conference that was held at 3:00 PM today. If you didn't get a chance to see it and you'd like to go back and get more of a recap, I believe it is posted on his webpage. But the key takeaways is that the executive order, the stay home, stay healthy order will expire on May 15th. And with that, a new executive order will begin on May 16th, titled Stay Healthy, Return Smarter, Return Stronger. This, again, is, this focuses on vulnerable individuals continuing to stay at home. Schools will remain closed. Some additional updates is that on May 13th, gyms, spas, and pools are scheduled to reopen, following, if they follow CDC guidelines. And major league sports may, may occur in the state of Arizona beginning May 15th. The governor also went into some data very quickly on some of the White House gating, or I guess you could call the phased approach to reopening. And he mentioned that we do have a decline in percentages of positive tests. We are at an adequate hospital capacity across the state, and we are continuing to expand testing. So those were the several key takeaways from his press conference earlier today. And I'm happy to answer any questions council may have.
Counsel? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Jack, did you say that, that he, when was he opening pools up again?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Shimonie, the scheduled opening date for gyms, spas, and pools will be May 13th.
Okay, that's, that's really wild. So tomorrow, gyms, pools, and spas will be opened?
Correct.
Wow, okay. Thank you.
City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor, Council, I provided you an email. I attached the guidance that was issued by the governor's office in conjunction with executive order 2020-36 that Jack was talking about. Again, pools, gyms, spas, so long as they're incorporating the social distancing, they can reopen. In addition, Jack had mentioned major league sports. But with that, I would qualify that, put a little finer point on it, without fans, is, is my understanding, Jack. Is that correct?
Mayor Sterling, the, I wasn't, I didn't grasp that from the press conference. I'd have to do some more research on that. My understanding was, is that sports can play and participate within Arizona, and that it's really up to the leagues when they want to resume that. Assuming that, you know, those events that will be held would be following the CDC guidelines. So I didn't get the gist that no fans could be present. But I guess we'll wait and see until the 15th, when more guidance is released. And I can look into that in the meantime.
Great. And with it coming out just this afternoon, that's something we can get you more information on, Council. On, on another front, the executive order also indicates that businesses can reopen so long as they're incorporating social distancing. And that's any business. The way that the executive order read. And the, what I like to call the preemptive language, if you will, the executive order was further enhanced in this to indicate not only cities and counties can't do anything in conflict or to contradict this executive order, but they can't even add to the intent of, it's, it's very clear. I didn't think it could be enhanced any further, but it has. The preemption is there. And my advice to you is, if you want to encourage businesses or people to continue, you know, moving forward in a closed fashion, they can do so. There is nothing forcing any business to reopen here. It's just that they can, they're allowed to. Finally, as for city facilities, we are in control and have authority over all city facilities. And, you know, an analysis of when and how it would be appropriate to reopen is fully within the city's purview.
Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. I've, I've noticed that we have little leagues that are planning the first day of practice, May 19th, and first games on the 26th of May. Is, is that within the purview of the governor's order?
No.
Little leagues can, but if they're using city facilities, then they can't. That depends on what we do with our city facilities.
Well, when will that discussion take place? Will that be a council discussion? Or is that something the mayor will determine?
I would defer, actually, to Greg on that one. I don't know when you plan on having that discussion, Greg or Mayor. Thank you, thank you, Sterling. We are at your pleasure, Mayor and Council, on this. It's all happening so quickly that we are without the benefit of having a lot of discussions. I will share with you that we, at the staff level, are currently- I will share with you that we at the staff level are currently, it's a work in progress as I speak, we are working on our reopening plans for our facilities, but we are not doing that in anticipation of any sort of deadline or date certain, as none has been given. We are waiting for the mayor's cue on that, and she has indicated on multiple occasions that we will follow CDC guidelines on that. And so that's our intent. Nevertheless, we're making, putting our plans in place right now, just to try to be ahead of that. Councilmember Whelan, your comment is specific to outdoor sports and organized sports, and that is not something that we have talked about, as we have shared before. The mayor has indicated that, or has stated that our parks and outdoor spaces will open up a week from Friday, that is Friday of Memorial Day weekend, which I believe is the 22nd. So we are planning on that, but we have not taken that conversation as far as what happens with organized sports and the leasing of city facilities to entities like the Little League. So perhaps that's a discussion that needs to occur now, or we can frame it for another day, but it needs to occur fairly quickly.
I would like to go ahead and jump in. I do see that we have Mr. Aslan, and then we have Ms. Whelan, and say that under my executive order, and I could be wrong, so I certainly might have to jump in here. What I was looking at, and these were my thoughts regarding city facilities. First of all, the reason why I said that we should go ahead and look at opening our parks, and by parks, I mean things like Thorpe Park, Bushmaster Park, whatnot, is because we already see people using those facilities. This weekend in Wheeler Park, there was people all over the place. And so it seems like you have visitors that are using those spaces, but residents who are understanding that they can't use those spaces, and that's becoming very difficult to manage. We also do not have a legal remedy for it, given the governor's executive order. So the idea was that we would open the parks, and because we have parks open, we would have to have some public restrooms there. Now, when it comes to our ball fields and our soccer fields, those are different. Those are fields that have to be leased by an outside entity, and the city of Flagstaff leases those spaces. Because we know that sporting events usually bring crowds, and there's not a whole lot of monitoring when it comes to social distancing, my idea behind that was that we simply do not have permitted use of those fields in that way. So for example, we would not lease the field to Little League right now. We would not lease the field to our soccer or our softball teams until we get to 14 days of a decline here in the city of Flagstaff. I also looked at our city facilities, and I have questions as to how we are going to make sure that, for example, the aquaplex is completely clean, every inch of it, all the time, when we have a pool. And I'm still confused about how you, how you clean the pools to a standard that they need to be. Exercise equipment, rock climbing gym, that we would have to make sure that we physically wipe and clean and disinfect every surface of that before the next group of people go up the wall. So those types of facilities, I was recommending stay closed until we reach a decline of 14 days or more. But certainly, I'd like to hear councils' thoughts on that, because I think that's very important. But those were my recommendations under my emergency proclamation. So I see Mr. Aslan, I see Ms. Whelan, but I also see Sterling. So I think perhaps we should go to our city attorney first, and then we'll go back to Mr. Aslan, and then we'll go to Ms. Whelan. Sorry, Mr. Aslan, city attorney trumped you.
No, I appreciate that, Mayor, and I'm sorry, council members. I just wanted to, in follow-up to the mayor's comments, on the guidance for pools, Governor Ducey's office has indicated that it typically isn't transmitted in pools that are properly treated with chlorine. That said, that's just in the guidance that was issued. With respect to the sporting events, absolutely, if we choose not to lease or rent our facilities to those who want to engage in organized sports, that's the cities, within the city's purview, and can do, the city can do that. Finally, also with the press release that came from the governor's office today, I want to read a sentence that says additionally, Major League sports can resume limited reopening without fans this Saturday, May 16th. So that's all I have.
Mr. Aslan?
Thank you, Mayor. So my original question was specific to maybe another topic that we're going to discuss later, but maybe it wraps around into this whole thing. And that is, when are we going to start having public, or council meetings at City Hall again? But anyway, I'll just couch that question for a second, I'll park it, because I think this is a good opportunity for me to express my concerns and my views about us, about Arizona opening up, and what Flagstaff as a city can control, and what we should control. And I go back to the science on this, and I think there's a lot, you know, we're in, COVID-19 is presenting us with a lot of questions, more questions than answers, but there are some general things that we know about the way that this virus is transmitted and how contagious it is. And so, you know, and when all else fails, looking at the science on this would be my guide. And I realize, Mayor, that a lot of these decisions are up to you, but you have my strongest support in terms of being as, I can't think of the verb, as being as conservative about reopening as possible, especially with regards to anything that's occurring indoors. And especially for anything that's occurring indoors for more, for a length of time. There's a big difference with COVID-19 between transmission on a baseball field and in the city council chambers, for example, or at a restaurant, for that matter. We know that this virus is transmitted through coughing and sneezing. It can be, it's released into the air every time we breathe. 500 to 5,000 droplets can be released every time we breathe, you know. And we also know that there's a relationship between a successful infection and the exposure to the virus times the amount of time that's been happening. Okay? And I don't, I don't know precisely why there's a minimal threshold of the number of actual coronavirus units that we can sustain before catching the disease, for lack of a better term. But we do know that there is a cumulative effect of being around the virus for a longer period of time in a closed space. And, you know, there's, I'm not going to pretend to be epidemiologist or a virus scientist on this, but I am looking at some pretty good information that is put out by those knowledgeable and trustworthy types of people. And I'm very concerned about us going back to City Hall before the end of the summer, to be frank with you. I think with, with all this reopening, which is a bad idea on the part of the governor, we are going to see a second spike in infections and the spread of this virus. And I feel less safe out around town next week than I did last week. And there, you know, to be, to try to wrap up my thoughts here, I think there are contextual differences between going out to the national park, between having a baseball game and eating, and the other side of the spectrum is eating at a restaurant, or using a bathroom at a gas station, or having a live city council meeting in person, where we're all sitting around a desk, even wearing face masks in each other's presence for three, four, five hours at a time, conversing with each other. So anyway, there's kind of a couple of different questions there. There's a matter of context about what we open with regards to the public, and then there's an entirely separate conversation about city council meetings. Mayor, I know you're eager to make sure that the public feels that they can appear before us, and to show that we're transparent, and we're not trying to, you know, hold our business in the dark, or to be unapproachable. But in terms of the virility of this virus, that hasn't changed. And we shouldn't be meeting at City Hall for the foreseeable future until that threshold you already mentioned yourself comes to pass. So I just don't know where we're at with that, and I'll leave my comments there.
We have Ms. Whelan, followed by the Vice Mayor.
Well, I'm certainly grateful that, that we're talking about this, and I want to thank all of you. I believe our community does need a message, not only from you, Mayor, but from council. And I would hope that that message would, would be from all of us. But again, you know, some of the beauty of our council is, is we are different thinkers. And so I too agree with science. I agree with the CDC in showing a decline and making sure our hospital facilities are at 70% capacity at all times. And if that goes above that, then we need to take more serious actions. I also understand about powerlessness, that, you know, we have a government system that is saying, open up. And we, as individuals, every day, make a choice, when we walk out the door or we stay inside. But I believe that there is a responsibility to our community to, to model the behavior we would like to see in the community. And I, for one, would only open up facilities after that 14-day mark. I believe wearing masks, washing hands, social distancing, all a priority. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everybody, for this discussion. Yeah, I'm very worried about what is going to come the days to come. I don't think that CDC guidelines for states to be opening up are being followed across the nation. And I like the idea of the 14-day mark. My heart goes out to the folks who are going to be forced to go back into work and risk their lives to keep their job, because they won't be able to file for unemployment otherwise. I think that we should definitely not be opening up pools, gyms, spas, and I think, Mayor, you and I definitely are on the same page with this. I think we need to really do some good messaging to the community. I like the idea of, of Mayor, you communicating, maybe through video and whatnot with the public, but also utilizing police signs. That was an email we received, saying things like, you know, wear a mask, social distance, save lives, you know, like quite simply, you know, opening up in the end might result in more deaths. So we got to be frank about that. And then any kind of city permit that we do, that anything we can do to minimize the spread, I think we should, you know. So any kind of permitting that the city does, if it's for an event of a gathering larger than 10, or whatever we decide, I think we should really consider that and consider the real risk there. You know, council member Asen spoke about the spreading of the virus and, you know, coughing and whatnot, but we're seeing that asymptomatic folks are also contributing to the spread and are oftentimes carrying the virus unconsciously. So I think those are my comments for now. There's a lot more I want to say. I'm very frustrated, I'm very worried for our community, and, and yeah, you know, I think we have to, I think we have to do this right for the sake of lives and for the sake of our neighbors. Thank you.
Mr. Odegaard?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to make comment that I stand with whatever the decisions of the mayor is making going forward with this, because we need to show unity. Right now, we need not to have any division going on. And I think the mayor's being thoughtful, and the decisions that you are making, Mayor. And, you know, we still have, this past week, we've had a spike in COVID cases throughout the county. So, you know, we're probably not in a situation where maybe other communities relax on things. I think we still need to keep our guard up. We still need to be conservative of going forward with our practices. So that's my only thoughts. So thank you, Mayor.
Mr. McCarthy, followed by Ms. Solis?
Thank you, Mayor. About 10 minutes ago, you made some recommendations, and I think what you stated was rational, and I support it. I think a few people in the parks, especially if there's social distancing, we can live with that. But anything like the climbing wall at the aquaplex, et cetera, as you said before, those should stay closed. So I support where you're at right now, and we can check in again in a week or two.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I stand by you in supporting your recommendation, you know, knowing that, you know, as a municipal body, we are preempted by, you know, the governor's order. I just want to keep in mind that, you know, globally, there's a resurgence of the virus in China, and particularly in Wuhan and Korea. So as we, you know, begin to reopen some of our facilities, you know, just spread the, spread the consciousness of, you know, wash your hands, don't touch your face, you know, physical distancing and hygiene and sanitation are key. So, yeah, we are in this together, physically apart. Thank you.
Mr. Clifton, I see you have a comment. I'm also wondering if you can weigh in on the conversation. Ms. Drum, I know, is working on a messaging, wouldn't say campaign, but a message, messaging strategy that the businesses have asked us for. Today during the conversation, I mentioned that perhaps all members of council could somehow play a role in that, so it would, so it would be more of a unitedness. And then we're going to go to the city attorney, and then I'd like to weigh in on the conversation. Mr. Clifton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. Yes, I will confer with our Public Affairs section, and we will work on that messaging. And I think it's an excellent idea that it come from the entire council to Mr., pardon me, council member Odegaard's comments. Unity is very important in this. We appreciate your leadership, Mayor, and all of council on this. My comment is that with the opening of the parks and outdoor spaces under the limited arrangements that you articulated slated for May 22nd, which is a week from Friday, along with that would be the outdoor restrooms that have been locked. And along with that, and consistent with discussions of the last couple of days, we would like to open the visitor's center and the visitor's center restrooms on a very limited basis. And that would be with all the social distancing requirements in place, of course. It would also be with some modifications to the facility, including sneeze guards and so forth, that will separate our staff from the visiting public. It will not be a full-scale opening, but rather a limited opening with limited capacity and protocol that is currently being established. This was going to be discussed at length on Thursday morning this week. I made mention at the outset that the staff is putting together reopening plans. Almost all of the public buildings will remain closed per the mayor's direction, and we will be waiting for, for her direction as to when that will change. for her direction as to when that will change. And we are grateful for that. I just wanted, Mayor and Council, for you to be aware that there is a very limited opening of the visitor's center is mostly coincident with the or or because of directly attributed to the fact that the visitors are coming, and they will be coming now even more so with the executive order from the governor's office today with the opening of the forest on a limited basis, as we just talked about, the opening of some of our outdoor parks and spaces. We know that the crowds will be here. We feel it's wise and responsive for us to open the visitor's center and the visitor's center restrooms on a limited basis. I wanted to make sure that everybody's apprised of that.
Before we go to Mr. Solomon, I want to I want to put a finer point on that, Mr. Clifton. So one of the things that was discussed today definitely ties into the fact that we have visitors here. And and with what's going on with the state reopening, we know more people are coming. It's not, though, that we're just going to open the restrooms. There was a whole conversation about the cleanliness and making sure that the confidence was there to be using the restrooms. So we were going to do above and beyond the normal type of cleaning when it comes to any public restroom. So that was part of the conversation today, too.
Thank you.
Mr. Solomon?
Thank you, Mayor. My follow-up, Mayor and Council, was just on that mentioning of the parks. Currently, those amenities are the only things closed, the parks. Parks are open. I just want everybody, I think that's been made, that's a point that's been made before. I'm just reiterating that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Ms. Drum?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. I wanted to add on one point to what Greg, City Manager Clifton, had mentioned a few moments ago. We are rolling out a new, I'll call it a series. It will go on our social media and our website starting Thursday. We're calling it the Recovery Roundtable. And it is a collaboration between a number of different parts of the city, sustainability, public affairs, economic vitality. And we are each, we're going to be doing this twice a week, on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And the public is invited to submit their questions and their comments. Each week, we'll have a theme, and it will be a videoed conversation discussing that. So, for example, on Thursday, we're going to be highlighting the city's Economic Response and Recovery Plan, with at the end, an opportunity to respond to questions and comments from the community. And so as we move through those, like I said, it'll start twice a week, this Thursday, and then it will be Tuesday, Thursday thereafter. And so I just wanted to let you know that we are rolling that out. So if anybody has any questions or if they know community members have questions, we've posted something on the city's Facebook page. If you'd like to share that, we'd appreciate it. The email address is recoveryroundtable@flagstaffaz.gov.
I want to follow up with you, Ms. Drum, because we had been talking about, you know, messaging to our community and to visitors about making sure that, you know, if you can, please wear a mask. Please make sure you continue to wash your hands. If you don't feel good, please stay home. You know, basic the basic guidelines that we keep hearing about. This was something that we had talked about doing as well. And it would be great if there's a way we can incorporate all members of Council. I know I talked to the Vice Mayor about this, and perhaps we can even do short clips on our iPhones that we all seem to have, and then email those into a central place, and they could be put together. So those are just some of the ideas.
Absolutely, and I have a discussion set up tomorrow to talk with Economic Vitality about about this film or this short video set. And so we'll be using that and capitalizing on and taking further the messaging that Discover Flagstaff has put out, the encouraging folks to wear your mask if you're going to visit, visit responsibly. I believe Heidi Hansen sent y'all an email with significant details on that messaging that they've been putting out. And so we will absolutely be incorporating that in anything that we put out. And I'd love to include Councilmembers in that as well.
So, Council, I want to take a moment and provide you a weekly COVID update, COVID nineteen update for myself, okay, as the mayor. And it is a bit lengthy, so I do apologize ahead of time. But I think that what I have to say is pretty important. And I want to make sure that you all hear what it is that I'm thinking, because I know there's different questions out in the community. So I want to start my remarks today with an update on the COVID nineteen numbers for the city of Flagstaff. Last week, which was a Cinco de Mayo, the city of Flagstaff had a total of seventy COVID nineteen cases. Those were individuals who were positive for COVID nineteen. And in Coconino County, there had been a total of forty-five deaths. As of today, today being the twelfth of May, the city of Flagstaff has a hundred and twenty-two cases. That is an addition of fifty-two cases in a week. And Coconino County has fifty-seven deaths. They have an additional twelve deaths. It's unfortunate that I do not have the information on deaths specific to our city, but the county is not reporting it that way. I wanted to make sure that you all and Council and city staff and then our our citizens at large understand that the city of Flagstaff is experiencing an increase in COVID nineteen cases. I also want to make sure, I think this is very important, that the public understand that the majority of cases in Coconino County, forty percent, are people who are the of the ages, who are between the ages of twenty and forty-four years of age. Now, I've asked several times, when we were having weekly and daily calls with the governor, that they actually break down that number, because twenty to forty-four years of age is a big time span, is a big age span. But that has not happened. So the only thing I can tell you is that forty percent of the people who are COVID positive in Coconino County as well, excuse me, COVID positive in Coconino County are between the ages of twenty and forty-four years of age. When you look at the overall numbers for our state, you will find that the majority of individuals who are experiencing COVID nineteen issues are between the ages of twenty and forty-four. Last Friday, Dr. Peoples, who is with Coconino County, stated that we can increase, we can expect the numbers to increase and to continue to increase for the next two to three weeks. Now, today at one forty-four PM, an email was sent out by Mr. Ben Blink, who is working with the governor's office. He's a policy analyst notifying all the Arizona mayors that the governor intends to have a three PM press conference. And given what we've heard and what we've read and what we've seen, it seems that the governor has rescinded his original stay-at-home order, and he has put in place a new order. And he has also increased his preemption language in the Section Seven of this new order to be very clear that cities and towns, excuse me, cities and counties can't do anything that conflicts with or is in addition to this executive order or any other executive order that he's issued. So to be very clear, the state of Arizona is currently operating under his executive order, and only he is determining what restrictions are in place, what are lifted, and the timelines for reopening. I want to be clear about something else. He has recommended that people follow social distancing guidelines, but he has not mandated it. He has suggested that retail establishments limit occupancy, but he has not mandated that. Governor Ducey has not mandated that face masks be worn. He has recommended that people consider wearing them, but he has not modeled that behavior. So as of May fifteen, we are open. Now, I want to stop for a minute and mention something that happened in, I believe it was Wilcox, Arizona, last week. The city of Wilcox opened ahead of schedule, and the sheriff there refused to issue any citations. In this case, we had members of law enforcement. These were sworn officers of the law, picking and choosing not only what laws they would enforce, but openly stating that they would not enforce the law. That is scary. So then, moving on. Money is not flowing. I want to be very clear with that. The majority of people in Arizona have not yet received their unemployment. This afternoon, if you go to the state of Arizona's unemployment website, it clearly says that pandemic unemployment assistance is set to launch May twelfth. May twelfth is today. Further states that applications will be processed beginning the week of May twelfth, and payments will begin for eligibility claim eligible claimants that same week. So the statement that was made today at the press conference that said money is flowing is not correct. Additionally, many people have still not received the promised twelve hundred dollars in COVID stimulus that was promised by the federal government. It was reported in news yesterday that stimulus payments will be going out. Additional more or the rest of them will be going out this week. Now, our state representatives, and I'm talking about the Senate and the House, have been on break since March twenty-third. They returned yesterday to debate whether or not they would return to work. The Senate seems to be done for this particular session, but the House seems to be interested in reconvening to chat about the creation of a new law, a law that would expand liability immunity for businesses reopening in the middle of a health emergency, in the middle of a public health emergency. I'm going to ask Council at some point to weigh into this. I think we, as a society, should have a broader conversation about this new law and what is driving this new law. Could it be that COVID nineteen numbers are increasing in our state, and we are not following CDC guidelines for reopening? Fourteen days of decrease or no new cases? Or maybe it's because there's been no clear direction given to businesses on how to reopen, and the governor has said they're going to be using trace testing so we can now identify where people are getting sick. And therefore, we know there will be lawsuits. To be clear, we have our state representatives are now trying to remove the liability of a from a business should you contract the disease working there or going there, and it be able to be traced back to the business. Now, I went around town yesterday just to see. And I visited many, many different businesses. And I can tell you that everybody's kind of doing their own thing. Some restaurants have standardized masks and gloves for their employees and only are taking credit cards or ATM cards. Others have employees with bandanas, no gloves, accepting cash. They're allowing people to wait inside for food in the masses. They're not adhering to six-foot rules, and many have people that are bunching up outside eating. I want to encourage all city Flagstaff residents to wear a mask when out in public in areas of high public contact. Please understand that you are wearing a mask not to protect yourself, but this is about your community and you're doing your part to help out others. This is about the overall community good. Council, we need to model the behavior we want to see. So I would encourage all of you to wear a mask when you're in public. City manager, I would expect no less of city employees, as it will be up to each of us as individuals to work together to stop the increase that we are seeing here in the city of Flagstaff. Now, in closing, I think it's important for me to say this. It has been insinuated that my speaking out against the governor's decision is due to partisanship. I want to point out to all of you that the political party of COVID-positive residents listed on the county's website is not something that is being tracked. I also looked for that information on the Arizona Department of Health when I looked at the stats there, and I didn't see that either. The business survey that the city partnered with NAU to conduct did not ask that question. And the individuals and businesses that had been writing, requesting and getting assistance with rent, with their business needs and food, are not being asked about their political preference. Indeed, as the mayor of the city of Flagstaff, I was elected in a nonpartisan election to serve everybody, and that includes all of us on Council. I am speaking out because our leadership in this state has chose not to follow CDC guidelines, has chose to ignore science, has not mandated actions that are needed, and has not modeled the behavior that is needed. And here, at least in the state of Arizona, we have denied or delayed or provided woefully inadequate assistance to businesses and citizens. COVID nineteen has turned our community and our economy, both locally and nationally, upside down. Our economy was decimated based on the concept that we would be saving lives by taking direct purposeful, meaningful action. The way it stands now, it looks that we may lose just as many, if not more, people. So, Council, that is my COVID nineteen mayor's report for tonight. So I would ask the city manager next week if we could put the legislative report back on, because I would like the Council to weigh in on this new law that is being proposed by our state representatives, should they move forward with it. So if there's no more comments on this particular section, Ms. Whelan?
Of course, I have a comment, and I just want to thank you for taking that time. I support you a hundred percent. I support our state community a hundred percent. And I support being the model that we want to see in the community. So, thank you, Coral. I appreciate your words and your actions.
Thank you. So with that, we are going to move down to item thirteen. This would be informational items from Mayor, Council, and City Manager, and this would be future agenda item request. So let's go ahead and start with Mr. McCarthy tonight.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And thank you for that information that you just shared with us on the virus. I really do appreciate it. And under the title or the heading of appreciation, I would like to thank staff for removing the graffiti that was put on our City Hall and doing it in a very rapid fashion. Bear in mind, that was done by one person. We don't know who it is, I don't think. And anyway, we had a lot of emails and a lot of valid discussion, but that action was inappropriate. But my main focus is, thank you, Mr. Clifton, for making sure that that got taken care of quickly. Other than that, you know, best of luck to everyone over the next week. Thank you.
Council, I want to apologize. I skipped item number twelve. And item number twelve is public participation for items that are not currently on our agenda. And so I want to go ahead and make that call for the public. Ms. Drum, do we have any public participation cards? No, we do not. Okay, thank you, and thank you for that reminder. We have moved back down to item number thirteen, and we are going to go with Mr. Odegaard.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, again, as I wanted to follow up with Mr. McCarthy's words that thank you to the city for taking care of City Hall, what was vandalized this past weekend. I really appreciate the quick action among their part to take care of an issue. So I'm very grateful for their quick response. Then also, I wanted to ask Mr. Clifton concerning downtown restaurants. There was a kind of a roundtable of about thirty-some restaurants this past weekend. And the downtown businesses were unclear, especially the downtown restaurant businesses were unclear concerning Park Flag. Do they need a permit to have curbside pickup? Because a lot of businesses, you know, want to be cautious, so they don't want to do dine-in restaurant capability yet. But they do want to try to get their business going again, and so they can stay in business. So they have some questions concerning Park Flag. Do they need a permit for someone to park in front of their restaurant on a city street for whatever time to receive their meals or whatever? Because there seemed like there's conflicting, saying, yes, there is a permit, no, there's not a permit. Yes, there is a permit, but there's a cost or a fee for that permit. So I was wondering if, I'm not sure if Park Flag is active at all, but maybe there should be some standards saying yes or no, there are a fee, or yes or no, there is a cost. You know, my preference would be no cost. I would understand there could be a fee just because, you know, you are taking up one or two or more parking spaces in front of that restaurant. Now, it might be a dedicated thing. So I know there's kind of a sticky point there, and so I'd like Park Flag or management to kind of address that issue and put a notice out to the restaurants in the downtown area, what they can or cannot do, or what will be allowed or not be allowed for the downtown, for the restaurants as they transition to starting their businesses back up. So, thank you.
And I will let uh Mr. Clifton weigh in on that. Um Mr. Odegaard, will we get to him? Because there was a whole conversation today with the Downtown Business Alliance about that. And I think that um that has been covered, I think. Um so we're going to go to
That would be great. Thank you.
We're going to go to Ms. Salas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to express my immense gratitude for your steadfast leadership. And I thank uh city manager and staff, you know, uh for um their hard work as well in um getting ready for this meeting and the next meeting. And uh I'm also thankful for the opportunity to um be part of the effort in connecting um Flagstaff Shelter Services over the weekend with the third motel uh to to be able to provide about 100 rooms yesterday for a vulnerable population. Thank you.
Ms. Whelan.
Thank you, Mayor. Um I too, uh I believe have already expressed my gratitude in in your leadership. I also am appreciative to uh council for their uh deliberate and mindful discussions about the community's safety. So thank you for that. I also want to express my gratitude to leadership and to all staff. I do want to um just support again that staff also be models in the community and are wearing masks and social distancing. That would be also be great. Uh I do want to say that I did attend the um meeting with with the restaurant tours. Uh it was a fantastic meeting. It was facilitated by Jonathan Kirsten. Over 55 different uh restaurants and businesses attended. Uh it was well facilitated. They took time to discuss um things, uh safety issues like use of masks. Also, social distancing tables, what are they doing with menus? Uh they discussed supply chain for food already. They're seeing up to a 300% uh increase on beef products. Um so it it was uh Kevin from Tinderbox, John from Salsa, Brava Fat Olives, Jamie from Satchmo's, uh and Dave from Oregano's were the the panel. And then by the end of the discussion, there were just a few questions. And it was just so amazing to see our community work together and and really share their experience, strength, and hope. So uh I just want to say uh thank you for for organizing that. And and good job. I sense the need that our our businesses in retail downtown are needing the same type of venue. And I want to compliment staff and Downtown Business Alliance in stepping up in and having uh those opportunities readily available for our businesses. I do, I do have a fair item. And that fair item would be to look at changing the charter so that citizens petitions and candidate petitions could go uh online rather than uh getting the actual signatures. And that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Um Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um I'd also like to echo my colleagues' comments about gratitude for your leadership and and actions. I think that I I I really appreciate your comments regarding city staff and and all of us really leading by example. I'm also curious to know if we can set up hand sanitation, hand sanitizing stations outside of our city facilities, properties. Um along with even a potential free mask opportunity at times. I mean, whatever it takes to keep our community safe, you know, if we can't close the doors at times, uh we can at least provide materials to to allow folks to be safe. I wanted just to take a second to acknowledge all the folks who emailed us this past week regarding putting folks who are experiencing homelessness into hotels and express gratitude for their engagement with us. Um I know that it can be difficult for the public at times to reach out to us and see hope in doing that, but obviously a lot did. And I think that uh we're all on the same page. And it was great seeing the county and the city come together and the county find that additional funding and and all the progress that's being made on that front. Uh I also want to just kind of also plant a seed for what's next. Let's let's really buckle down on getting these folks into housing the best we can and not right back to square one in a few months from now. Um I think that that long-term planning, we can start talking about sooner than later. Uh I've been in touch with a lot of different community resources in Flagstaff. And they're out there, and there's a lot of different support systems that are available to the public in need and are very important today. So I wanted just to give a shout out to them. I like that we're talking about like an outreach plan that's going to occur twice a week. I'm very excited about that and look forward to help support that uh effort to reach the public. And I'm grateful for our leadership's efforts in doing that. And I'd like to see, I'd like to have staff report to us maybe during next week's COVID update on how are we planning to address our bathrooms? You know, that's simple. And um I know that our facilities are going to be closed until we open them. But I'd like to start talking about that plan sooner than later again. Um and then if there's council majority support with this idea, I'd love for us to look into creating a guiding document of city values. As to how funding is distributed to the community during the COVID period during through a lens of um uh of of really keeping the community's best needs, top needs in mind. So maybe that could be a conversation we have next week. Um be safe, everybody. Take care of yourselves. Please take this thing seriously, and um I'm very curious to see how the next week or two play out. Thank you.
Mr. Aslan.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, Council. Um I want to echo the sentiments that have already been spoken. Uh thank you for your leadership on this, Mayor Evans. Thank you for listening to science. Um thank you for not kowtowing to uh the politics of the day. And uh for keeping your constituents and your neighbors and with the Flagstaff community in mind and keeping their safety and health and well-being at the center of uh all the decisions you're making. Um I don't have any further updates right now. I I I did note that we haven't actually had a conversation about when we might be returning to city hall. But I suspect through context clues that the answer is 14 days after um we start seeing a decline at the earliest. Um so I I don't know if there's a room for any uh um clarity on that uh at this time, but I'm I'm sure the conversation will come up again. And I did want to add that uh, you know, a big part of my thinking there is is just thinking about the folks who are coming and sitting in the audience and listening to us. Uh windbags, um spread viruses for three or four hours at a time. Um all kidding aside, uh this, you know, the the question of how how open we are as a council at city chambers is is something that is very much a the an issue of public safety as well. Um I think for the time being, this new technological solution seems to be working pretty well. Uh it might not be the most accessible for the public. Um but that's the time we're in, and I look forward to the day that we get back to uh a fully robust uh conversation. And and honestly, um I prefer talking to you guys without having a barrier in front of my face. Uh in terms of a cloth mask, I can't imagine speaking three hours into a mic while wearing a mask. Um but that's a very minor inconvenience. I know our public health officials are doing just that all day long every day. And uh it uh I I just, I miss seeing your guys' faces. I miss being able to talk openly with you all um and with the public. Um but I know that we are doing the best we can, and I am encouraged very much, Mayor, by the way that you're uh approaching this crisis. And uh I just thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Clifton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh what wonderful comments by all. I know we at the staff are also grateful for all the leadership. Uh and we're especially grateful that um you're keeping us safe uh here in city hall and elsewhere with the closure of our facilities. I wanted to respond to one thing uh and add on to another. The responses with respect to the parking downtown, we have, of course, covered our kiosks, our parking kiosks, and that has been the case for the past several weeks from the outset of this pandemic. Uh it is free parking downtown. It has been, and it will be. Um and we do not have a deadline to change that. And uh it goes without saying that we will be uh checking closely with with DBA. And we were on the phone with them yesterday. Uh and this council uh to 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 garner your input before making any changes there. That said, it doesn't mean that it's parking pandemonium. Uh we still need to respect the lawful parking requirements, i.e. not parking in uh disabled spaces uh or, you know, on corners and and the light. But that is, uh that's not a paid parking issue. That's that's just a traffic code issue. But our paid parking has been suspended, and that will remain the case uh for the foreseeable future. Um stay tuned on any changes there. I also wanted to add on, because there were some very thoughtful comments from uh council member McCarthy regarding the graffiti removal. Uh I cannot take credit for orchestrating that. Credit goes to Mr. Andy Bertelson and Mr. Craig Smith, uh who were uh on the spot removing that graffiti within hours of being notified of its presence on city hall. And uh I I came out, uh this was on Sunday, a holiday, Mother's Day. Uh I came out midday just to meet with them, and they were hard at work. Uh pardon me? Thank you. Um they were hard at work scrubbing, uh using the necessary solvents to remove the uh graffiti. And then I understand that the other crews uh came on site the following day to do the follow-up work. So uh an amazing staff, uh no phone calls were needed. They they heard what happened, and they were on the spot to remove it. And uh thanks for the thoughts, uh council member McCarthy. And uh please take note of those who need to be credited here. Um is there anything else I can do, counsel, at this point? Because I think that's all I have.
I don't believe so, Mr. Um I have a few short things for this. Um Mr. Mr. Odegaard.
So just to follow up with uh uh the manager Greg Clifton comments. So the issues that restaurateurs had for downtown, those all been addressed, I would assume then?
Do I I take it you're referring to uh uh the ability for people to stop and pick up items without having to pay for parking or have a permit?
Yeah, because I I know, um you know, some restaurants um concerning, you know, if they have a parking space in front of their restaurant, can that be their dedicated parking space for pickup and delivery?
Allow us to have a conversation uh about that at the staff level. I don't believe it's been an issue up until now because we haven't had a lot of vehicular traffic, quite frankly, in in the downtown area. That's about to change. We will discuss the, and thank you for the clarification, council member. We will discuss the uh our opportunities to help the the restaurants to ensure that they have uh the means for people to pick up who want to continue to do that. Let us put our uh uh minds to that a little bit, and we'll report back.
Ms. Whelan.
Thank you, Mayor. Um I just typed in, never mind. I'll ju- I'll just direct that to the city manager and city attorney. Thank you.
I just saw that. It's like boom. There was four things I had um quickly. First of all, I want to make sure that there's a lot of people to say thank you to. But I want to stop and say thank you to our um Public Information Officer, Jessica Drum. She is an office of one individual. She is busy not only with um press releases and videos and whatnot for the COVID-19, but then there's all the rest of the stuff that she was doing before that happened. So I just want to say thank you for um all the work that she's doing and all the different um projects that she's juggling all at one time. Um Jessica, you are doing an awesome job. And you have a job that I do not believe that I could do or would want to do. So thank you very much. Um second, I wanted to ask our city clerk. Um and this is related to um council member Whelan's uh fair item. Can we please get a CCR um regarding uh the online petition? Um definitely, there is one part of it that the city could do through a charter change. But there's also a part that has to do with Arizona Secretary of State and something that they have not done that would also allow it, I believe. And so I just think that a CCR would really help us with the discussion. Um I wanted to mention that Flagstaff Shelter Services um had stated uh during a conversation that they were able to put 70 people into two hotels because we uh we as a city council, um we had the opportunity to help redirect some CDBG funds earlier on. And what has been awesome about that is that three of those individuals who have um who were part of that have been permanently housed. And I think that this goes to the vice mayor's comment about, hey, what can we do further to make sure that those individuals that are now in this new model, this new way of doing things um end up being permanently housed on the other end of it? How can we turn this pandemic and this tragedy um into um a new way of um of providing um shelter services and getting people into homes? So I thought that would be good to point that out. And lastly, I don't know um where this goes, but I think it ties into um Flagstaff Local, my Actions Matter campaign. So I'm going to kind of throw it out there and see if Heidi Hansen's um department, Economic Vitality, catches it. But you know, we talk about modeling the behavior we want to see, and we talk about the mask, right? How cool would it be if we had a show us your mask contest or something like that? I know that I've seen some pretty cool masks out there. It's a pretty happy mask and bright mask. And so maybe that's another way of um getting people um um encouraged or providing encouragement to people to wear their mask is if we had a contest that looked at, you know, show us your mask or something like that. So those were just some ideas that I had. And if there's nothing else, I would say that this council meeting is adjourned.